The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, February 13, 2019 is now called to order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tavana?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Vice Chair Hanson?
Here.
And Chair Hudes?
Here.
I'd like everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the Planning Commission conducts this meeting this evening, on behalf of the Town Council and residents of Los Gatos, we encourage active participation, which is essential for democracy and critical to the work of the Planning Commission. That participation can occur through written comments about agenda items submitted to staff prior to a meeting, which are always welcome and helpful. Also, during our meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications, period, an individual may speak on any topic that's not on the agenda. And during the meeting, on a specific agenda item, any member of the public may speak about that item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the Commission tonight during verbal communication, period, or during consideration of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated. Turn the card into a staff member. Please print your name clearly. When you speak, I ask that you come up to the podium and adjust the microphone so that you are speaking directly into it. Please state your name and address for the record. In fairness to all who want to speak at this meeting, it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. We've now come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the Commission on any issue not on the agenda of tonight's meeting. Please remember, there's a three-minute time limit. When the yellow light comes on, it means you have 30 seconds left. When red light comes on, it means your time has expired. I have one card. Is this about items that are not on the agenda? This is Heidi Owens. Yes, please come up.
Hi, my name is Heidi Owens. Thank you for your valuable service to the community, Commissioners. I really appreciate it. I serve on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. And because this is full and I want to get more involved, there's no spot for me. I created a delegate role and they approved it. So I'll be the delegate for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission to the Planning Commission. I can't speak on behalf of them here without their approval, but just wanted to let you know I'm here. If there's anything that you want to tell me, I'm here to listen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. That's going to be very helpful. Okay, we now have the consent calendar. We have one consent item to be acted upon in a single motion. Before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or Commission may request that any item be removed from the consent calendar. At the Chair's discretion, items removed may be considered either before or after the public hearings portion of the agenda. Tonight, we have one item, which is approval of the minutes, January 23, 2019. Do we have any discussion or a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll move the adoption of the minutes.
Commissioner Badami?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay, I'll call the question in favor. Passes unanimously. Now we get to item number two, which is the public hearings portion of our agenda. And we will consider item number two, which is 11 Peralta Avenue, Minor Residential Development Application MR-18-008, Requesting Approval for Construction of an Addition to an Existing Second Story of a Pre-1941 Single Family Residence on Property Zoned R18, APN 51042073. Property Owner Wendy Fan Kandasami, Applicant Tony Jeans, Project Planner Erin Walters. This has been continued from December 12, 2018, and January 23, 2019. May I have a show of hands from Commissioners who visited the property under consideration? Great. Are there any disclosures? Okay, before we proceed, I'd like to explain the format of our hearing this evening. Since the referral to the Planning Commission and this hearing is based on an objection from a neighbor, this agenda item will follow the flow of an appeal. Therefore, we will follow the 1010355 format. The objecting neighbors team will have 10 minutes to make a presentation. Then the applicant's team will have 10 minutes to make a presentation. Then we will take public comments at three minutes each. And the applicant's team will then have five minutes to make final comments. And the objecting neighbors team will finally have five minutes to make final comments. Of course, questions by Commissioners are welcomed in each of those sections. Ms. Walters, I understand you'll be giving the staff report this evening.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The 8,000-square-foot subject lot is located on the west side of Peralta Avenue. The site's developed with an existing pre-1941 two-story primary residence with two permitted attached accessory dwelling units. The property, in 2001, two ADUs were permitted on the subject property and therefore creating one legal ADU and one legal non-conforming ADU. And this application does not modify the existing number of ADUs on the site. The residents at 15 Peralta and the six-car garage do cross the subject property line. These are existing conditions and the subject application does not include any proposed modifications to those. The application before you tonight is a minor residential development application for the construction of 540 square feet, rear addition to the existing second story of the single-family residence. The existing foundation is damaged and when replacing the foundation, the applicant proposes to move the structure three feet to the north to add to further, add to the side setbacks and then also add below-grade square footage. The proposed 2,500-square-foot home is the fourth largest in the immediate neighborhood. And the proposed home meets the required setbacks, lot coverage, height, and setbacks. The project includes exterior modifications, including relocation and resizing of windows on the north and south elevations and the elimination of the front, one of the front two doors on the front elevation. In May 2018, HPC reviewed the project and recommended conditions. The applicants incorporated those changes into the development plans found in Exhibit 25. The town's consulting arborist provided specific recommendations to protect the large oak tree at the front of the property throughout construction. A notice of pending approval for the minor residential application was mailed to the surrounding property owners and occupants as required by town code. And town received written objection from the neighbor at 9 Peralta with concerns that could not be resolved with staff or through the application. Concerns included privacy, mass, parking, and tree preservation as described in Exhibit 10 and 17. The applicant provided a summary of neighborhood concerns and actions taken and a rebuttal of objections in Exhibit 12. The applicant submitted modifications to the development plans in a letter that summarizes these changes that address the privacy are found in Exhibit 5, which include window changes. On January 23, HPC reviewed these window changes and recommended that all windows would be double-hung and that the second-story trellis could be removed or reduced to three feet. The applicant has provided a letter in Exhibit 24 that addresses all these recommendations. All windows can be double-hung with the exception of two in the lower, below-grade square footage area due to egress requirements. Also, the second-story trellis has been reduced to three feet. Public comments have included letters of support and a letter expressing concerns regarding parking and mass. So based on the analysis provided by the report, staff recommends approval of the minor residential development application subject to the revised conditions found in Exhibit 23. And this concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Are there any questions of staff from any Commissioners? I had one question, if I may. The, in the objecting letter, there was a concern that this could turn into four units rather than three. What, how would the town ensure that there were only three, meaning the main plus the two ADUs?
So the building permits would be reviewed per the approval of the architecture, I mean of the minor residential permit for three kitchens, for three units of a certain size. After that, if there was any modification to expansion of that unit, then it would be a code enforcement issue.
And was there anything in the objecting letter that made you take a closer look to see whether it was really three units or four units? And where did you come out on it?
It's three.
And was there anything in there that made you take a closer look at it?
The applicant expressed concerns that the storage room at the lower level could be turned into a fourth unit. Again, it wouldn't be approved for that. And so if that occurred in the field, it would be a code enforcement issue.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Hanson?
I did think of one question. And it goes to the parking. They have this parking garage, for anyone that hadn't read the whole staff report, that has several parking stalls in it and they're all very small. And so there, but there isn't any, as you mentioned, there's no part of this proposal to change the garage. So is there anything that can be done about, to ensure that it does? Because this would impact parking if they didn't get around to doing that, for whatever reason. Because they're not really using the garage for the purposes of parking all those cars today. So is there anything that can be done about that, or we just have to hope that they're going to fix it?
So because they're not modifying anything, there's nothing you can do about the existing parking. That is an existing condition that was used for the three prior units, the single-family home and the two ADUs. And so that will be the continuation of what will be the proposed use for the site. So there's no modifications that can be required.
And just to confirm, given the legal non-conforming garage units, it is in compliance with our number of parking space requirements for the number of units that there are?
It is in compliance, and I would actually, I'll make a statement and then defer to Ms. Walters to confirm that. But for ADUs, with our current ordinance, if it's within half a mile of a bus stop, we actually can't require any parking spaces for the ADU. So it would only require two spaces, period, for the entire three units for the site.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Janoff?
Just another question about the garage stalls. When I looked into the window of the one on the end, it looks pretty small. Do they actually accommodate modern-sized vehicles? Let's assume it's not a smart car.
Right. A vehicle can fit into the car. It is, I'm sorry, into the garage. It doesn't meet our current standard, but a vehicle can fit into the garage.
And open a door?
Depends on the car, I guess so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the objecting neighbor an opportunity to address the Commission for up to 10 minutes. Mr. Fox, I believe you'll be speaking. Could you please just state your name and address for the record?
Hi, I'm John Fox. I live at 9 Peralta Avenue, Los Gatos, 95030.
Thank you. Go ahead.
May I proceed? Okay. Well, good evening. And my wife Donna and I live at 9 Peralta, as I say, immediately adjacent to and below and south. We're on a hill. That becomes important to the backyard privacy issues in a moment. As things stand today, ladies and gentlemen, you have six of the seven immediate neighbors to the 11 Peralta property in opposition to the 11 Peralta property expansion because of the current property onsite parking limitations, which, if you approve this project, will, of course, get worse because there will be two more bedrooms to that property and many more cars. They're increasing by 33% the current four-bedroom to six-bedroom configuration. And they're adding a length of the back of the house of between a quarter and a third to that house, which raises the mass issue. And you have every neighbor in the neighborhood very concerned about the towering and majestic oak tree in the front property that borders between my property and 11 Peralta. Apart from the parking and tree problems, almost all the neighbors share. Donna and I have two problems unique to our property and the proposal. The increase in mass, although others in the neighborhood who walk Pennsylvania Avenue also share that concern, we have found, and you have a letter in your file from a neighbor about that that I'll come to in a moment, and the loss of privacy, which will occur when 11 Peralta suddenly grows 25 to 33% bigger in the back and rises three stories above us because we're a story below them. So to us, that second story is three stories above us. Looking directly down into our backyard, our kitchen, and our breakfast nook area, which is where we spend most of our time in the house, as I'm sure most of you do too. And they're also proposing to put three new entrances to the building on that backside, right on our property line. They're basically moving the front of the house to the side, addressing our backyard. They're going to reposition the main front door entry to the rear of the house at the junction with our backyard property line, said another way. That new front door entrance will thus create entrances to two floors above ground and overlooking our backyard, kitchen, and breakfast nook area, along with the entirely unnecessary, I might add, second-floor patio that'll just serve as a viewing deck right into everything we've got in the back of the house and the backyard. I've lived in downtown Los Gatos since 1987. Donna and I have lived with our three kids at 9 Peralta for almost the past 23 years since 1996 and during which we have made extensive renovations to the inside and outside of this historic Julia Morgan home. It's a house with such emotional impact on the town that it was the very first house, in fact, that this Commission permitted in Los Gatos to be renovated after the Loma Prieta earthquake. I'll link this up in a minute. But in 2014, Donna and I bought the iconic red brick building at 315 University across from the fire station, one with the stoned arched buildings, and renovated extensively inside and out. At proud citizens of Los Gatos, we spent millions of dollars renovating these properties. And I tell you that story only because Donna and I are both very, very proud that we did not have one single objection from one single neighbor because we worked awfully hard to accommodate everybody. In fact, between those two properties, we planted over 50, five-zero, trees to accommodate privacy concerns of various neighbors. Fifty. We would have gladly put in more had they asked us. But we took care of everybody and made sure that there were no objections to a single thing that we did despite massive renovations to both properties inside and out. But let's get into it. Despite Tony Jeans' written representations to this Commission that both this project has no impact on the neighborhood and that the parties were close to resolving our difference, that is simply not true. It's hogwash. The privacy issue is our largest concern. It's easily solved, in our view, by putting up 12 to 15 Italian cypress trees on two-foot centers, as you see all over this town. You've got examples within 100 yards of this building of four of them alone, by my count. Solving that problem would also allow Donna and me to withdraw our objection to the proposed expansion of the front-to-the-back length of the house by another one-fourth to one-third. And the mass that that expansion entails, and it would also allow us to withdraw our objection to the erection of the large outside patio deck on the second floor that overlooks our back area and house. That outside patio will just act as a viewing stand for everything that goes on in the back of our house. Is it a massive addition to the rear of that house? Yes, you bet it is. You received in your desk item on December 12 a letter from a Miss Kaufman who lives on Pennsylvania Avenue and who described to you her reaction to the project this way. Quote, "The scale and scope of this project is massive," close quote. She reported to you, in fact, that she cried when she saw the story poles go up. Now, for the record, I don't know Miss Kaufman. I've never met her. I didn't put her up to do that letter. But I've heard that same comment from a half a dozen people that I see on the street walking up and down Pennsylvania Avenue. No impact on the neighborhood? No one believes that except for Tony Jeans, and I hope you do not. Donna and I asked that the Commission not approve the project or at least disallow construction of the second-floor outside patio on a property, by the way, which already has many beautiful gardens and trees and patios, unless the new owners plant 12 to 15 20-foot-high Italian cypress trees on two-foot centers on a portion of the fence line where we have this viewing problem. If the Commission would order the privacy trees be planted, that would solve our privacy problem and the mass problem in their entirities, allow the new owner to have her second-floor patio and still easily see the hill to our south, which is what she wants to see. And the privacy trees eliminate our concern about the mass of this project since we will then not be forced to see it. Let me convert to parking. I think the parking garages are illegal, but I obviously have to defer to staff. They're not 10 by 20 on the inside. They're 10 by 20 on the outside. Cars simply do not fit in those antiquated and sagging horse-stall garages. And if those garages are to code, the town simply needs to change the code. We'll have to worry about that at a different time. You may miss that opportunity here. But regardless whether the garages are to code, the Commission should exercise its discretion, I would suggest to you, to require a million-dollar renovation like this to have adequate garages to house the many tenants of this property. What's the proof that the cars don't fit in there? Let me give you four. 22 years that I've been at that property, dozens of tenants have tried and failed. Every prior owner of the property, which have been three since then, have insisted in contract at our suggestion that they require the tenants to park in there. And they have tried in good faith. I have worked with many of them. I've done it down on my hands and knees measuring those garages for them. It hasn't worked. 22 years, there's only been one tenant that has been able to survive in there for more than a week. And we've had dozens and dozens of tenants. They used to run that on a six-month cycle. Second piece of proof. Tony Jeans' niece, one of the current tenants, tried parking in the garages and badly damaged the right side of her vehicle, which then predictably went right back onto Peralta with a badly scraped fender and quarter panel. I'm no machine shop guy, but it looked about $1,000 to $1,500 of damage to me on her second day of trying. Next, currently, today, you have five of the current six cars in that house that are on the streets. Even when they're under the microscope and everybody's watching, they're not in the garages. They're out on the streets. And if you're out there looking today or yesterday, you'd find that to make it appear even less dense, they moved the cars over onto Pennsylvania Avenue, hoping that you wouldn't notice that sleight of hand. Nobody's been able to live in there for more than a week. There are cars that physically don't fit at all. The Commission should deny the 11 Peralta proposal unless it requires the owners to build now at least four onsite garages of appropriate size to house the tenant cars. There are four different stories we've heard about the tree, which is why the tree is on the agenda here. First, Tony told me he was going to take the tree down because he wanted to put solar panels up on the south side of the roof. When the town arborist told him that wasn't going to happen and the uproar in the neighborhood ensued, he quickly changed position to position two. The tree was a threat to life and property and needed to come down. He begged my assistance with that. The town arborist and I both independently came to the conclusion, nothing wrong with the tree. It's very healthy. It's beautiful. I would not join him in that false suggestion. Third position, when that didn't fly and the neighbors were getting very aroused at that point, he said the tree would not survive construction. That then caused a neighborhood watch to make sure that he doesn't poison the tree. Everybody's watching the tree now, talking to the town arborist. Then he fell back to his fourth position, the current position. The tree may be damaged and could die during construction. That's why I'm going to ask you to ask for a $15,000 bond to make sure that tree doesn't get hurt somehow magically during this construction, which is massive, picking up that house and building a new area. I'm going to ask you to do four things. Whoop, I'm out of time, so I'll do that later, I guess.
Thank you. There's the opportunity to ask questions. Maybe some of your points will come up during that. So do any of the Commissioners have a question? Commissioner Hanson?
So as I was listening to your presentation, I thought you had gone through your objections and what would satisfy them. And so you talked about the view and if they planted Italian cypress. So my question is going to be, did I get this right? Just so you know, I'm asking a question. And then you talked about the parking and what you wanted, and you talked about the trees. So is there something else that you were looking for that would make you come from the objection to the satisfied side?
We got the 12 to 15 cypresses. It would solve the privacy and the mass problem. It's as simple as that on those two issues. On the parking, they need to build the garages now because all those cars are going to be out there. We usually have between seven and 11 cars, depending on who's there in the house. We'll have 13 to 17 cars potentially, if you approve all these new bedrooms. We can't staff it now. There are days, many days. I can't park in front of my house at all on a 100-foot lot line facing Peralta. The third thing is the tree. We're all going to watch it, for sure. The town arborist said he's going to watch it. But I think you need to put a bond on them because Tony wants to get rid of that tree.
Okay, so my question was, was there something else besides the tree, the parking, and the view?
Just those four issues, Madam Vice Chair.
All right, thank you.
If I may, follow up on a couple of things. So you've made the point that by planting 12 to 15 20-foot Italian cypress trees on two-foot centers, that would alleviate the privacy and mass problem?
That's correct.
So do you have any objections to the structure itself if that were to happen?
No, because we wouldn't see it then.
Okay. So then your remaining objection would be to the garage and to the tree?
Correct.
Okay. So a question about the garage. You said that you requested that they build four garages. How did you arrive at four?
Well, it's my reading of the code, but I'm going to defer to your more seasoned staff than me. But I calculated it, and Tony Jeans also confirmed my calculation to me, for whatever that may be worth, that he owes four garages, if you were to code today.
Okay. So I'll follow up with staff?
It's clearly four, as I read the code.
On that in a little bit. And then the other question related to that. On what basis can the town require someone to remove a non-conforming structure, in your opinion?
I don't think you have to approve and grandfather and further a bad act. I think you can exercise your discretion not to further a bad act and make it even worse than it is. It's a current non-conforming use. And you have an impact on the neighborhood with the addition of all of these additional bedrooms, which is going to bring at least two more cars per bedroom, if not four, to the existing seven to 11 count that we see historically. I don't know. If you are telling me that this Commission doesn't have that power, then we need to go to Town Council and radically revise a lot of different codes around here because this is just an atrocity for the neighbors. And this growing creeping change that just destroys the feel and look of the neighborhood can't be right.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. I will be asking staff and council on that. Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I want to know how the Italian pines would help your neighbors?
How would it help them?
Yes.
Well, it would prevent them from having to see the power lines that I currently don't see because I've got them blocked from our ground-level view with Italian pines in our yard.
But the power lines are unrelated to this project, correct?
Well, no, there's what they would see, but for the erection of the pines, and also, they don't have to see me getting into my hot tub every day, which I now use for medicinal reasons. It's not a toy anymore. But the other thing is, they're going to need to put a lot of trees in. That's why Tony suggested some trees, because they're taking out a lot of trees to back that house up another 30, 40 feet, whatever it is, and they're going to take out some gardens and trees. They need to plant trees, as it is. They're proposing trees that don't have any full body, you can see through them, and they're not contiguous. They're going to be big spaces between them, because they need those for their decoration of their backyard, which has beautiful gardens, as they say. So, I don't think it deteriorates anything. The only concern I have heard from the owner is that she wants to see the hill to the south of us. The trees that I'm talking about won't interfere with that. Remember, they're putting in an English basement, so they're three to four feet up, and then you start the first floor. So, they're starting their second floor at about the 15-foot level. I'll defer to staff who will know precisely, but my rough calculation was about 15 feet up. So, we were just trying to block the view as they looked down into our pit. That's all. And we don't think it'd impact on them at all. People love Italian cypresses. They're all over the place.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
We now give the applicant 10 minutes to address the commission.
Tony Jeans, P.O., Box 1518 Los Catos.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm getting one of the owners to give you a list of the slides in case they don't show up very well here, so this is just what I'm going to go through briefly. The background, the property was purchased by Wendy and Kathleen about a year ago. There are two buildings, the one on 11 Peralta and the one next door on 15 Peralta. They came together. There are five units. They're grandfathered in. They're difficult to change because of potential loss of housing units. Specifically, the Victorian at 11 Peralta, which is the one that we're talking about today, is one single-family unit. It is one accessory dwelling unit and one legal non-conforming accessory dwelling unit. That's how it's configured now, and that's how it will be configured after we have finished with it. The immediate priority is to remodel the Victorian, keep the three units, and find out what the costs are for Kathleen and Wendy. They plan to live in two of the units. The top two units will be one for Wendy, one for Kathleen, and rent out the third. They will then rent out the two units in 15 Peralta and sell 15 Peralta if the costs don't work out during construction. We plan to request a lot-line adjustment to reconfigure the two properties. That's a separate application. And put in better garages at the rear, again, if the dollars are okay, and also consistent with sequencing, because we need to access the property from the rear during construction. So, some of what we do at the rear, we can't do until the construction on the Victorian There was a significant amount of neighborhood outreach that initially started. We talked to neighbors. We incorporated neighbor input into the plans, specifically the tree, which we were planning on removing. When Mr. Fox objected, we said, okay, we'll keep the tree. We agreed to move the house three feet further away from his property so as to be less of a privacy concern for him, and we initially had parking in the application. We were asked by planning to remove the parking from the application because that would be a separate application and is nothing to do with the minor res. You can ask me questions about parking later, and I will answer them. We tried to accommodate requests from the Foxes at 9 Peralta. There were 14, a list of 14 requests. You have them in your packet. We could not come to a resolution on all of them. We did most. Subsequent steps, we've been through to-ing and fro-ing with the historic committee to make window changes, which have all been resolved, and there are members of the historic committee here, so if that becomes a question, we can deal with it. I want to deal with a couple of things that Mr. Fox mentioned. He said there was approximately 25 to 33 percent increase in the footprint and the mass. Okay, so let's look at that. The existing house is shown here. The proposed is shown to the right. If you subtract the footprint to the current footprint, you have 170 feet more, which is an 11 percent increase. So, nothing to do with the 25 percent to 33 percent that he's mentioning. As to the bulk, which might be considered of square footage, the square footage of the existing house is 2,100. It will go to 2,500, approximately 400 square feet of increase, or 20 percent, 400 square feet, the equivalent of a two-car garage. So, that's what we're planning on adding to this. So, there is no real major 25 to 33 percent addition that Mr. Fox is mentioning. Also, note that the height at the back is lower than the current house, so we've tried to reduce that, too. I'll talk a little bit about privacy. This is in the plans, but I want to go through it a little. The trees that, first of all, this is 9 Peralta, the Fox's house. This on the left is the remodel addition that we're doing. We're proposing a patio at this level and a balcony at that level. First of all, note that the balcony is 20 feet away from the property line. So, if you go up to the edge of the balcony and you peer over to see into the Fox's property, for whatever reason, you're 20 feet away. If you're on the patio level, the fence blocks the view anyway. So, there is no view here at the main level of the Fox's hot tub, which is used for medicinal purposes. What we want to do is plant trees that grow to 12 feet. 12 feet is the calculation such that, at the lowest level, Kathleen will have a view of the Santa Cruz Mountains, and from the top level, Wendy would not be able to see Mr. Fox in the hot tub. What Mr. Fox has asked for, the trees have changed, is that the trees be, I'm told, they varied, but 20 to 25 feet tall, which would be this high, which is totally unnecessary. And what we have come up with is something that provides privacy. If we were to agree to plant cypresses, which I do not have the owner's permission to do, I would say, we're going to cut them off at 12 feet to retain the privacy in both directions and the view. So, if that is acceptable to Mr. Fox, so that he cannot be seen when he's in the hot tub, that's okay by me. What we had chosen was a different set of trees, which are not just a solid wall that are totally impervious to sunlight, but a tree that allows filtering of light. You can't really see through it, but it is much more acceptable in terms of a barrier, more of a large hedge-type tree. I think in terms of what I want to discuss now, that would probably be sufficient. I can talk a little bit about the parking. I've got another minute and a half. So, originally, parking was on the agenda. I submitted a revision of the rear garage, which is currently a massive six-car garage at the back, and the plan is to convert it into a two-car garage and a three-car garage. Has to be done very delicately because of not ending up with technical demolition, the rules that would then require the relocation of the garages to a different location, but it can be done, but with all our access having to come from the back, that can't happen, at least the three-car garage can't happen, until the access, the going in and out with grading equipment, with construction equipment, et cetera, is complete. We have no objections to the garages at all. They're just not part of this application because it was suggested by staff that we should not include them in this application, because it's not part of this application. I think those were the main areas that I wanted to address. I guess, one, I'm a little confused about the three stories above. We're one story higher than below, and in reality...
Thank you, Mr. Jeans.
This were higher, it would be more visible.
Okay. Maybe we have some questions about that, particularly that drawing. Do any of the commissioners have questions? Yes, Commissioner Badami?
Mr. Fox had stated that his primary concern was the privacy issue. So, can you just confirm for me, and I think I heard it from your presentation, that if it meant an approval from the planning commission, and I don't know how my fellow commissioners might vote on it, but you're not willing to compromise on the tree fence being the Italian cypress? Is that what I hear you say? Definitely not.
We have suggested, I think, four different options. We're open to others, but we would prefer them not to be cypress, which we don't think are appropriate there on a Victorian. And secondly, they provide an absolute, when they're grown, an absolute wall that is impervious to light. We'd like something that lets a little bit of a feeling of light through and still obscures the, you know, the vision aspect of privacy.
Thank you, Mr. Jeans.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I heard you say earlier that although you didn't have your clients okay, were you to put in the Italian cypress, you would want them not to be higher than 12 feet? In other words, you could cut them off at 12 feet. Now, forget for the moment that you don't want an Italian cypress. I take that to mean, whatever's there, if it's 12 feet or less, I'm not asking you to agree to Italian cypress, but what you're saying is you don't want a barrier there higher than 12 feet.
Correct. And I think Mr. Fox is asking for 15 to 25, depending on what, hey, the week it is.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Tivana?
Yeah, excuse me. Can you comment on the current state of affairs of privacy in the backyard? What's the, do you know what the line of sight is currently to the backyard? Can you see the hot tub currently?
What you are not seeing on this particular plan is that there is a balcony. First of all, the house is not back here. It is out at the dotted line, and there is a balcony at this level that comes to within two feet of the property line. So, the existing privacy issue is a balcony that is two feet from the property line, directly there, and then exterior stairs that walk down. Anyone walking up or down those stairs would have a direct view of the hot tub. There is no screen along this fence line. There are some trees further in. I don't know whether the current situation is problematic for Mr. Fox. I'm sure he's got used to it for the last 20 years or so that he's lived there. I personally believe that moving the three feet, the house three feet further away at Mr. Fox's request, which we acceded to, and then moving the balcony from two feet from the property line to 20 feet from the property line is a significant improvement. You've got to remember that the only line of sight of the trees is from this balcony at the rear. So, we do want to have the balcony and the patio. It's fundamental to the enjoyment of the property, and Mr. Fox's house is the largest house on the street. It's about 3,200 feet. We're substantially smaller on a smaller lot and are trying to see past it to the Santa Cruz Mountains.
Thank you. Commissioner Janoff?
Mr. Jeans, regarding the garage, is it currently protected by the town's historic structure codes? Is it considered to be an historic structure?
It's not considered to be historic, but it is a structure which, if, so it can be modified, it can be changed. I have plans already drawn up, fully, all the way through structural drawings and engineering to create a two-car garage and a three-car garage on those lots in a clever way so that it will not be a technical demolition, which would require it to be relocated.
I don't need those details. Just was curious about the historic status. Thank you.
Not historic.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
So, I wanted to refer to your privacy drawing again. So, have you shared this with the appellant, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, it's on the plans.
Okay. So, and did you discuss it with him? Because, I mean, based on the, you know, view that you told us and the lines of sight, it sounds reasonable, but I didn't know what discussions you've had with the Foxes about that and whether or not they could accept that.
I think by the time we got to that point in the dialogue, we were no longer communicating Like I said, there was a list of 14 questions that the Foxid has asked us to do, and they're listed in that, in your packet, and this was one of them. Our solution to that was to plant the trees. We went into our property, the owners and I, and John and Donna, we walked up to all of our windows and looked down and said, well, how about if we plant a larger tree here, which is shown on the plan? So, the trees that are called out on the plan were trees which, at one stage, John and Donna had said they would be somewhat okay with, but then we couldn't reach a resolution on the remaining items, and we're now here.
But it's your position that because of moving the house three feet and because of the relocation of the balcony further back into the property, you know, towards the north, that that would mitigate, in a combination with a 12-foot tree, that would mitigate the privacy? the privacy issues? That's your position?
I, I'm a mathematician. So when I look at this, I cannot see how, with a reasonable hedge-type screen here, how anyone on either of those two locations can see that hot tub. So this person clearly can't. Even with the fence there, they would not be able to see the hot tub at the balcony level up here, which has been relocated from here, where you could see down diagonally. You can't see there. It's mathematically not possible.
Okay. So you answered my question. Thank you.
So I have a follow-up on the privacy, if maybe while we're talking about that. That drawing is, you said that's in the plans? Where is that in the plans?
The top left-hand corner on Sheet 2 up there.
That's a different drawing. That doesn't show figures. That doesn't show...
It shows the eyeball looking down as opposed to the stick figure.
It's not that drawing, though. This is new, correct? I saw it, I actually saw this drawing at Historic Preservation, but it's never entered into the plans or in anything that the Planning Commission has seen.
I think that the drawing at the top left-hand corner has actually, what I have is an eyeball. I don't have a figure. I have an eyeball. I have that line. I have an eyeball, that line. It has this, it has that, it has...
So it would be helpful to have this drawing before the Planning Commission, particularly interested in the scale of the trees that are drawn there?
Yep.
So it looks like you have two different heights of trees. It looks like the second height is about 24 feet and the third height is probably 28 to 30 feet tall?
I think that was 20 feet and that is 25, based on the original request of the Foxes as to the height of trees that they want to...
And the green tree on the bottom, is that 10?
This one?
Is that 10 or is that 12? What is that?
I have drawn it at 10, but we've said 12. This is a six-foot, it's probably 11. This is a six-foot-high fence accurately drawn. I've said, to block that view, if we do trees to 12 feet, it should absolutely screen everyone.
Okay. And is that a drawing that you can make available to the Planning Commission?
It's in the packet that I just gave you, that you have a series of, of every slide that I've put out, you have that.
Ah, yes, right. Okay.
So...
Just submitted that. Thank you.
Hopefully you can look at that and, you know, see it more clearly.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
On the parking issue, it's my understanding that you're not asking for any change in the garages before us, that in fact, staff and I believe you believe that without touching the garage and with the additions you propose, you will meet the city's or the town's requirement on parking.
More than meter is what I've been told.
This discussion of what you might do with the garage is all very interesting, but it is not required by the code.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay. So we're now going to open the public portion of the hearing and take public comment. And so I have several cards here. If someone else would like to speak, please put a card in. My first speaker will be Ed Nguyen on Peralta.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, go ahead, please.
My name is Ed Nguyen. I live at 20 Peralta, which is directly across the street from the project. You got a letter, I think in your file, from Lori Jones, who is my next-door neighbor, dated January 17th, where she lists some objections she had, both specifically the parking and the tree in front of the house. I wanted to speak specifically about the parking, but certainly supporting what Lori said in that letter, which I think is quite accurate. The parking has been an ongoing problem as long as I've lived there, which is like 12 years now. There is, I have sympathy for the tenants. They have to park in the street because the garages are completely inadequate. They're unusable. If you go back there and look inside one, you can't put a car in there and get out of your car, with any reasonable-sized car. So the tenants are forced to park in front. And so Peralta Avenue, this nice neighborhood street, becomes a parking lot. It's not the tenant's fault, but the owners, I really think, need to do something to fix the problem. It ruins the street. From my personal standpoint, many times I can't park and have a guest park in front of my house. It's taken. They will park there for several days at a time, just this last weekend, there was a guy there, for four days in a row. You know, and that's not the way it should be in a nice suburban street. I can't put my garbage cans out sometimes to the curb because there's no curb available. And it's going to get worse, it appears. Now, what I would like to see Tony do is even if, I don't care if it's Phase 1 and Phase 2, but some commitment that those garages are going to be made usable for the tenants. Right now, I think it's very mushy as to whether anything will ever get done. And so I'd ask that somehow there's some stipulation in that says, we have to have usable, accessible parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell, if you'd stay up, please, Mr. Nguyen.
One question. There are presently six garages, and I've been told by all of you, I think, that perhaps the garages are too small. We've also been told by the staff as to what the requirements are for parking. But that aside, would you be satisfied with four garages that were the right size?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Fellow Sterns, 11 Peralta.
My name is Fellow Sterns, 37 Peralta. I'm three houses down from the project, and I look in my backyard every day and see the story poles of where Kathleen's beautiful view of the mountains are going to be, at the same time they're cutting off my view of the mountains. I want to reiterate what Ed just said about the garages. I really wish that was part of this original permit, because we too never can park in front of our own house, and I'm three houses down from this project. I don't understand what the developer said about why you couldn't change the garage configuration before. How is it going to be different if you have to have access to get to the back with the structure already there? So I really wish you'd put a hook into getting those garages, because that's a real problem for us. And I really do object to the mass, because I enjoy looking at the mountains myself, and that will be cut off by quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Art Monk.
Mr. Chairman and Madam Vice Chair, Honorable Counselors, my name is Art Monk. For 15 years, my wife and I have lived at 33 Peralta on the northern boundary of the merged lot known as 11 and 15 Peralta. You have copies of my remarks handed to you. There's two pages of remarks and there's two pages of exhibits. These two parcels form a merged lot under Town Code 2910070 due to the common ownership of them, and you'll see that code in your handout. I note that both parcels have sold simultaneously on two occasions in the last 15 years to identical new owners. Such events likely void the certificate of compliance on the property that was filed in 2000. We believe the town therefore must consider issues concerning the entire merged lot and not just applications directed to the individual parcel. The implications of this will be discussed in a moment. We are not opposed to the proposed renovation project. I'll leave a little bit of air there. We are not opposed to the renovation project. We have a few concerns that we have discussed with the owners and wanted the Planning Commission to be aware of them. Trees. I was in Aaron's office about an hour and a half after the first story pole went up, talking about that tree. We are concerned about the potential loss of the coast live oak labeled number 476 on the Arborist Plan, which is located at the southeast corner of the property, and the impact such a loss would have on the look of the west side of Peralta. Please note that no statement of instability appears in the Arborist Report for 476, and it is the only coast live oak on the property indicated as being good condition. All other live oaks on the property are indicated as being fair condition. The owners have committed to implementing the recommendations of the Town Arborist. We are skeptical that these recommendations are sufficient to protect the tree from attack by those who wish to re, it removed as initially written into the building plans, since there have been instances in the neighborhood when trees oddly became diseased and had to be removed, six months after a removal permit was denied. On November 27th, the planner of this project wrote to the neighborhood that, quote, "It is uncertain whether the oak tree at the front of the property will survive," continuing on, "The tree is massive and could cause a great deal of damage if it falls." So this statement really is an attempt to ameliorate the future loss of the tree. We want the loss of the tree prevented, and all efforts should be made toward that. In terms of parking, the parking problems on Peralta have been exacerbated by the passed, by the tenants of the merged lot using the garages in the lane, not using them. And the owners admit that the garages do not need code and that they are almost unusable for the width of cars in use today. So I will end my remarks there. I have more things to say, but you have my written comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Do we have questions from commissioners? Commissioner Janoff?
Just a clarification. You said that the letter from the planner stated this oak tree was potentially unstable.
No, he did not say that.
I misunderstood you. Could you clarify that?
I will read that quote to you again.
And who is it that you're quoting?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. And the letter was distributed around the neighborhood, and it said, quote, "It is uncertain whether the oak tree at the front of the property will survive. The tree is massive and could cause a great deal of damage if it falls," unquote. You could say that about any tree that's around us here.
My question was, who are you quoting?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Tivana?
If you don't mind me asking, where, you know, it seems like a large, I've driven up and down Peralta, and there's, you're talking about parking is a concern of yours. I'm curious, where do you park your vehicles? Are they on the street themselves?
We have a 420-square-foot two-car garage. It has two cars in it.
Great.
And that's where we park.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
I had a follow-up question as well on the parking. What is your suggested remedy? You were able to express a concern, but I didn't hear what you might suggest as a remedy for that situation.
We think that the garages should be addressed immediately, before the work is done on the renovation, so that they might even store materials in those garages during their renovation. But at least, we're not struck with the problem of doing the garages after people have moved into the units, and they then have to park all their cars on the street while the garages are being built, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And the reason I ask, I know you've provided it to us in writing, but it's come after our deadline for desk items, so we really can only place the weight on the, what you submitted, as, you know, given the amount of time that we've had to absorb it. So thank you for clarifying in your remark.
You're quite welcome. And the exhibits are there regarding the lot mergers as well as requirements for parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker is Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. I think you've read my letter, my initial letter, where I had concerns about the windows and also about the mass of the third, of the second-floor trellis. I think that both of those issues have been resolved at the Historic Preservation Committee. I might also add, since I'm the only one who's speaking who doesn't live on Peralta, that I am within the notice area for this particular project. It's, I'm just going to make some comments in no particular order, as I was taking notes. And I'd like to say that I'm in a strange position, because I'm usually up here objecting to a project of Tony Jeans', and I'm supporting this project as it's been modified, because I think it meets all the requirements of the town. It meets the town's obligation for ADUs, and it is not requesting any changes now to a non-conforming legal structure, the garages. It maintains the ADUs. In fact, it doesn't even use up all the FAR on the lot, even though for ADUs, you can actually go over the appropriate ADR for a single-family home by 10%. They're not asking to do that. I think the applicant has been extremely generous in agreeing to move the house three feet further from the property line, and certainly the removal of that horrendous outside staircase is a big improvement. As to the privacy issue, as Mr. Jeans' illustration noted, the balcony is sunk into the roof form. So if you're sitting on the balcony, you're not going to see over the balcony and down into another yard. You're just going to see out straight or up. Most people don't spend their time on their balcony at the very edge of it staring down. And even if they did, I would, from my own example or experience, my house is about 20 feet back from my neighbor's house. My bathroom window looks out down. If I stand at that window and look across into my neighbor's lot, I cannot see their patio or any of their backyard. I don't think this is a real issue, and what else do I want to say? I think this is a real improvement to the lot. It really improves its historic preservation aspects, and cypresses I do not think are appropriate, and not everybody loves them. I have one that was planted by my telephone pole. I hate it. They cannot be topped. That ruins the tree.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Maybe we have some questions? Yes, Commissioner Badami?
A view of the mountains is highly prized in Los Gatos. So for the applicant, this would be a new view for her, because she doesn't have an existing one with the balcony. The balcony would create a new opportunity for her to view the mountains. But at the same time, it would take away an existing view for Mr. Sterns, who also takes great pride in viewing the mountains. Do you have any thought process on how we balance that?
My impression, it wasn't the balcony that was taking away his view, but it was the building itself. That's number one. Number two, unfortunately, views are not guaranteed unless it's a public view. And from experience, I've had the same kind of issues come up from houses that were across the street from me in two directions that were like 600 and 700 square feet, that morphed into 3,500, 4,000-square-foot houses, and that blocked my view of the hills. But that was not necessarily taken into consideration, because it was a private view.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Okay, thank you. I have one more speaker, Belinda Milford.
My name's Belinda Milford. I'm a neighbor on Manzanita Avenue, and I walk the neighborhood often. I guess I don't have anything new to add, but I'd just like to add my voice to the objection to the plan in terms of the mass of the building and the parking problem. If extra bedrooms are being added, there'll be more tenants and more cars on the street. I don't think we want to turn that beautiful historic street into a parking lot, and the mass of the building proposed would also do that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. That's the last card that I have. So at this point, we will now call the applicant back to make further comments.
Thank you.
Firstly, the view issue from the neighbor at 37, he's actually three homes down the street. The relative portion of view of the Santa Cruz Mountains that we blocked would be infinitesimal based on the view from his street out at the Santa Cruz Mountains. So you're just taking away a very small part that he is looking at beyond 33, which is next door, and then 15. So let me deal with something that I thought was a little upsetting. This is a very poor picture, I have a much better one, of Mr. Fox's property. As you can see, his focus is totally away from the house behind, which is my client's property. Yes, there are a few windows that look there, but his lifestyle, his focus, is not looking back at the house next door, it's looking away from it. Secondly, as I said before, he has the largest house on the street. He has, there are the story poles that you can see sneaking out behind, and the owner of 37, who lives three houses further behind, is not going to have a wide angle destroyed. I'm going to assume something, because I don't know if in your packets you have the PowerPoint presentation that Mr. Fox had. This is one of the pictures from it. So this photograph, which handed out is the pack, in the packet, and it's one of the pictures that Mr. Fox says he looks up at. And I looked at that, and I said, "I don't, I don't remember that when I go out there." So I looked at it seriously, and then I said, "I also don't remember the hot tub being quite like that." So I went out and I measured the height of these fence posts at six feet. I measured the distance between these fence posts as six feet, eight feet on the longer ones. And I can see that this has been stretched out dramatically. So if Mr. Fox shows his PowerPoint presentation, please be aware that this is reality, and that is not what he sees. So I don't want you to be confused when Mr. Fox comes up, if he does his PowerPoint presentation and shows you all these pictures of looking up at the backyard. It's a very small portion of a view that is being interrupted. There is my photograph where it is, and I was just shocked when I saw it. So getting back to one point, actually, I'll address the tree first. The comment about the tree perhaps not surviving is in the arborist report. It did not come from me. If Erin were to find you the appropriate page in the arborist report, I quoted what the arborist said, and he said, "The tree may not survive construction, even though we have moved the house three feet further away, which will help." And you do not know. The other side of the tree is a four-foot vertical wall, so there are no roots growing in that direction. So it's precarious, and he was concerned about it, as is shown in the arborist report. I have three seconds, so I'll just finish there.
Okay, perhaps we have some questions. Commissioner Hanson?
So I wanted to go back to the parking issue. Although legally, there's no parking issue because of the way our town code is, but you have, there's an issue with the neighbors, and so I'd just like to understand, in your original presentation, it was sort of along lines of, well, if there's still money available after everything else is done, then maybe we'll do something about this. But here's the issue that will persist after this renovation is done, if it's approved, is that there's going to be this ongoing parking issue. There are likely to be more cars parking on the street, and so there's going to be a lot of bill of will with the neighbors. And so what is your relative confidence that something will be done to address the parking? There's, there's, there's a plan conceptually, but it depends on how things go.
A remodel of this magnitude is very difficult to determine how much it's going to cost. I'm not building this house. Kathleen is employing someone to build it. I do not know where she is on budget. I know that a lot of costs of construction have gone up dramatically in the last 12 months. She has a budget that she's trying to stick to, and I do know that the garages are usable but very difficult to use. The interior dimension of the width of the garages are nine foot, nine inches. The town standard for a single garage is now 11 feet. Used to be 10 way back when. The garage doors, I believe, are nine feet wide to give people room to turn around and try and reverse in or go in forwards. Yes, people have dinged the side. At the moment, I'm told by Wendy that there are five cars that are currently from people who live at the house. Wendy and Kathleen, when they move in as owners, remember, you're going to have a different situation than you have when you have five tenants or five units all occupied by tenants. You'll have a landlord who is living on the premises, the owner, and I think you'll end up with a better situation. I would really like there to be money left over. Kathleen has already paid me and a structural engineer to do all the necessary work to create the plans for the garages. That is all done. So it's simply a case of, okay, can we build them now? Probably not because of access, because Kathleen wants to have five garages, not four, because she wants one per unit. So that if you have three units in the Victorian and two on the other, she'd like a two-car garage on 15 and a three-car garage on 11. But I don't know if that will happen the day the work is completed on the Victorian. I, you know, that's beyond my purview.
I totally understand, and that's probably more of a question for the owners. But what I heard you say is, and tell me if I missed anything, is it sounded like the plans exist, there, it's just not certain what the costs of construction will be. But you also said that the owners will be moving into the building, which, you know, they're going to have more skin in the game, if you will, as to this situation, because they'll be, you know, living at the place.
Right, and the, the plans are at such a level that I could submit them tomorrow to building. But we can't do that, because we are required to have access off the back.
Yeah, you answered that, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
This is sort of a dual question, i.e., I think I should ask the staff first, because we're talking about parking, and I'm not exactly sure what we can do about parking today. And I'd like to know, as I understand it, we don't have before us now anything that we can do to change the parking. If that's incorrect, are there something we can do? I'd like to know what it is.
Well, that is accurate. They don't have anything proposing to modify the parking situation as it currently exists. So a couple of points of clarification. The three units now and in the future, if this project is approved, only require two parking spots pursuant to our code. We also-
For how many units?
For all three of those units. The town also does not require a garage. The town also cannot require them, even if they have a garage, to park in their garage. So there's a number of issues that may or may not be resolved moving forward, and so that's the current town code, and that's all over town. And we also have non-conforming garages all over town, and people modify their homes and make improvements, and we don't have the ability to make them modify that to bring it up to current code.
So let me just follow that. So do I understand correctly, then, we could not impose as a condition doing something with the garages to have, for example, five bigger garages out of the six existing garages?
So the site before you is only one of the parcels. So that would be a difficult stretch to make that requirement, because you'd be not only requiring spaces on this parcel, but on the adjacent parcel that's not before you this evening?
Well, okay, but I want to get that clear. Some portion of the six relates to this parcel.
Absolutely.
So what is it, three?
Three.
Three and a half.
So, so I guess I'm just, I'm trying to get to the jurisdictional issue. If we all say, well, this is great, we can only deal with three, let's impose the condition that those three be sized, it seems to me lose one space, sized so that your tenants could get in more easily and get out more easily. Are you saying we could do that?
No, because you have an existing legal non-conforming situation. You can't make them, make them modify that.
That's what I thought. So I'll go back to Tony now, just for a second. You were saying that, money aside, you would, your client would be, again, money aside, wants to go ahead and make the changes, but, one, we can't impose that condition on you, we just heard that. Two, you're not sure your client can do it until she ascertains the cost of the initial project. Is that correct? Now, you can't volunteer today, notwithstanding what we can do, to say, "Look, I'll solve this problem by agreeing to do it." And we'll deal with whether that's enforceable in a moment.
There is a condition that you might be able to put on this, and that would be that before final occupancy of the Victorian, the remodeled, all the work gone on, Victorian before final occupancy, a building permit be obtained for the three-car garage portion on this lot, because we can't deal with the other lot separately, I'm understanding, and that would be acceptable to the owner.
But of those three, and I'm still-
They would be full-size garages.
You're taking the existing three, which are not full sizes, and magically making them three full sizes. How do you do that?
I add six feet to the length and turn them into 12-foot-long.
But that would have to be approved by the town, and you don't-
That would have to be approved. I have already drawn up the plans for the approval of that, not just the planning set, but also the structural engineering plans, and that could be done.
This will probably involve both staff and the attorney. I don't see how we can impose that condition. However, I wonder if we can make it part of the record that the applicant has made this statement of what he intends to do. What the value of that is, I don't know, but at least it's of record, is what is said. And as near as I can tell, that's about the best we can do on the parking, and that's more than we could do, but for the voluntary nature of that offer.
And I would look to the applicant to confirm. My understanding is that this is what he's offering to do as a condition of approval, irrespective of whether we can require it or not. So this is an offering by the applicant to do this. So if he's willing to accept that condition, then you are more than willing and more, and free to add that condition.
Okay.
I will say that currently, they are not only non-conforming as to width, but they're also non-conforming to depth, so I'm not sure how he's going to accommodate that.
Well, if I were he, I would make some more specific offer, i.e., as to the width and the depth. But if you're prepared to do something like that, I'd like to hear it.
I do not believe that the depth is an issue. The interior requirement, I believe, is 20 feet on depth. We actually have 19.6. On the inside, we would stay at 19.6. Most cars are up to, you know, 16 feet in length. You've got room to park. The real issue there is width, and what I'm proposing is a nine-foot-wide garage door with 12-foot bays to give people plenty of room to pull their car in. Cars are typically seven feet wide, and open their doors, get out. This is planned for that lot.
So are you prepared to make that then a condition of any approval that you might get this evening?
Yeah. Yeah, yes. Got to remember that the two owners are living there anyway, so they want, they want nice garages. They want to be able to park their car.
If you're prepared to do it, then fine. We'll keep that in mind when we make a decision here. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Just as a follow-up to that, is that a condition, that offering, to file a permit or to build the garages?
I don't know how long it's going to take to do the work for building the garage. I don't want them to not be able to move into the Victorian, you know, because the garage isn't yet finalized. So, you know, I, my suggestion is that they come in, they spend their money, they pay for the permit, they get things underway, but I don't think, it's very, it's technically very difficult because of the non-technical demolition requirement on those garages. So it has to be done incredibly carefully, or all of a sudden, they go away, and you can't put them back. So I, my offer is to pull the permit and get everything ready. That's as much as I can do. I'm not the builder, I'm not the owner, but the owners said, yes, they'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, implicit in that, though, is that you will now impose-
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Implicit in that is not only that you will pull the permit, but that you will, an old word was forthwith, start and complete construction, subject, however, to the approval of the town of the, of the plans which are submitted.
I'm okay with that.
That way, it's just not going to be out there forever.
That's all right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Janoff?
I'm confused about the technical demolition concern that Mr. Jeans is commenting on, specifically since we've heard that a garage is not required. Can you comment, Mr. Paulson, on whether the structure could be removed before building anything in order to provide access for building materials or open-air parking? So I'm confused where the technical demolition relates to this structure.
So technical demolition does relate to the structure if you want to leave some of it and not have to go through a subsequent discretionary review. If, for instance, he wants to demolish this entire structure, the three on the one side and the two on the other, then he would, for the three, for sure, be over 450 square feet, so he'd have to come through for a minor residential application for a detached accessory structure more than 450 square feet. So he would have to go through a subsequent discretionary review. Now, if he came in and just wanted to take three and a half of them off and leave the other on the other lot, that is possible, and that would not require anything other than a demolition permit for the portion he's tearing down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reminder, we'll have opportunity to ask questions of staff and deliberations. Any more questions, Mr. Jeans? I had, I had one, and this comes back to some concerns that the neighbor raised in his first statement. He said that the second story, that he said that the addition rises a story above the existing home at 9 Peralta. And so I wanted to understand that, understand how that is happening. So is the height of 11 Peralta changing in a way that it's another story above what's existing, an additional story above what's existing?
No, the addition that we are doing is going to be two feet lower than the- No, the addition that we are doing is going to be two feet lower than the building that is currently there. It is not being, when it's moved, it's not being elevated. It is staying at the same level. I think what Mr. Fox is trying to get you to believe is that this, because it's at a lower level, is one or two stories higher than his house. I, I'm confused as to that.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I was going to ascertain that the height was not going to change when you lifted the house and moved it over, and you've stated-
That is correct, and it's shown on the engineering drawings as such.
Okay. The other question I had was about the existing staircase and how that relates to the privacy. So today, from the existing external staircase, is there a sightline to the hot tub on Nine Peralta?
If you turn around and look at the drawing, sorry, the color rendering behind you, you can see the balcony and the stairway coming down, and you can see that anyone going up and down those stairs is going to stare at the hot tub, and anyone on the balcony above is going to be looking at the hot tub, albeit not directly, you know, at a 90-degree angle. It's at an oblique angle. But yes, it is, so the orange one is the orange painted stair that you saw when you went out there, and the little thing in the backyard is the hot tub and the stairs you see as you go up and down.
That answers my question. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Jeans? Okay. Mr. Fox, would you please come up? You have five minutes plus questions for your comments and discussion.
Very good. Thank you. Let me just give a potpourri of responses here. I don't want anybody on this panel to think that Mr. Jeans or the applicant were accommodating to us in any way. We asked for a number of things. What did occur were things that were mutually beneficial to the applicant and to us, or were differentially only beneficial to them. I did not request that the house be moved three feet back. That's just felt wrong. Tony Jeans approached us and suggested that he was going to move it back three feet. My suggestion was, no, you ought to knock down the cottage and resituate the house in the middle of the property. That was the only thing I said about moving it. We never suggested a three-foot move. He did that for his own parochial, private reasons before we ever knew about the project. That was the first thing he told us on day one. Let's talk about the access. He's going to have access. He says he can't knock down the garages or touch them because he needs access. That's false. There's about a 12-foot dead area to the south of the garages. That's how he has told me, and in my presence told his client, that the contractor he told me he had hired was going to access the property, which was new news to her and to me, and he was going to not, of course, take down any garages. So he could be correcting these garages today without any impact on his access, because he's going to access it not through the garages, but through this 12-foot strip of land that exists between his property and the garages. The thing that you ought to know about the garages, too, is this. They have told me flatly repeatedly that they cannot afford to build the garages. In talking with the owners themselves and with Mr. Jeans, they told me that they would not give me a guarantee that they would build it within a year of occupying the property, nor would they give me a guarantee that they would do it within five years. They said, we just don't know, we can't afford it. And that cost problem is getting worse for them, apparently, according to what I understood from Ms. Wilson. Mr. Jeans says that, making it sound as though the staff forced him not to file a second application for the garages. What staff told him was, you need to technically separate it into two. Not that it wasn't wise or appropriate to fix the garages, as I think he was trying to suggest. Mr. Chair, I agree with you. I've never seen that drawing of the sightlines. I don't trust them. I hired my contractor, I hired my landscaper to run sightlines to figure out what the height of the trees was. This was not off the cuff. We, I told them both to assume a five-foot-six point of view, six-foot person with eyes down a little bit lower, and they came up with 18 to 20 feet. My suggestion to Mr. Jeans has been consistently 20 to 23 feet. I don't know where the suggestion that we've been variable about that. We have heard one suggestion of a tree type. We haven't heard two or three or four. That's just factually wrong. We did hear that that one tree would be open, it would not block. It was going to be a short tree for decoration. It wasn't going to be a privacy screen. So we're not locked in on Italian cypress. We just want something that'll block the view of this massive piece of a house that's coming and block the sightlines. As to the staircase, somebody walks on the staircase for less than probably three seconds from the areas that you could see from the staircase, perhaps twice a day. In my 22 years there, I've seen somebody on that staircase maybe three dozen times, if I'm lucky. This is not somebody sitting on a porch or standing on their porch. They walk up casually here and there. Right now, since 1900, when Julia Morgan built our house to the footprint that it is, the two houses sit at the front door at the same place and the back door is at the same place. He's pushing out 20% more, according to him, 25% more to my, according to my construction general contractor. Thank you. Oh, I've got 20 seconds, I guess. Our landscapers just disagree with his sightline and with his measurements. I don't know if he's counting from the wall line and not the porch. We were counting from the full width of mass, beginning of some structure to the end of some structure, and we came up with 25 to 33%, depending on which structure you counted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Do we have questions? No questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We will now close the public portion of the hearing, and we can now move forward to questions of staff, discussion of the item at hand. So would anyone like to get the conversation going with some comments, perhaps? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Staff for a second, but as I understand the report, the proposal complies with all of our requirements. So, and in addition to complying with all of our requirements, there is an offer here to add a condition which we could not otherwise require relating to the three garages. On the other side of that is that although it complies with all of our regulations, and although an offer is made, which we otherwise couldn't require, on the parking, there are still some objections to it. And I guess the question I would have then is, it seems to me the condition on parking could be a good condition if properly framed. But if there are some other things we could do to satisfy, it's not our obligation to satisfy everyone. It's our obligation to satisfy what the requirements are. Sometimes we're able to go a little bit beyond that. So I guess I'm really saying, are there some suggestions of what we could do to go beyond that, notwithstanding the otherwise satisfaction?
Well, to that question, Commissioner O'Donnell, I would ask staff, one of the remaining concerns was that the applicant take out a $10,000 tree protection bond. And has that ever been done as a condition of approval? How common would that be?
Well, I hate to say ever, because I've only been here 18 and a half years, so I'm not sure what happened before that. What I will say is that our town code, the tree protection section specifically, does allow the town to request or require a bond for trees if we think it's necessary. So that is something that is possible.
So is it staff's opinion that it is not necessary?
From staff's opinion currently, it's not necessary, but if that's something that is important to the commission, then we can definitely request that bond. The amount, I know Mr. Fox mentioned a number, but we would look at the tree evaluation from the arborist report and then determine a bond from that point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
So I wanted to ask a question again about the parking. So there was a number of comments made about the, about the number of bedrooms potentially increasing, which could lead to more cars. And we don't have number of bedrooms in anywhere in our code tied to the number of parking spaces, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just to also reconfirm, you know, the added difficulty we have with this property in particular is that the state of California really encourages us to have more ADUs. And although we're not adding more ADUs, you know, one of the ways that they're doing, encouraging ADUs is to reduce the parking requirements if you're so close to a bus stop. So whereas if it was some other structure that didn't have an ADU, there might be a requirement for more parking spots, but there is less because it has ADUs, which are encouraged by the state of California. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
The only kind of bonds I've ever seen have not included this tree bond we're talking about. Typically, if I bond something, then I have to violate something to cash the bond in. In other words, if you bond something relating to a tree, I assume it means that you won't do something, or you will act with care in taking care of that tree. Now, if the tree dies from reasons beyond your control, I would assume the bond would not pay off. So I guess one of the things I have in my mind is, if we have no present belief that the tree is under any particular stress because of this, and I say that because we've been told now that the report we have says that this construction may cause the tree to suffer. So that apparently is in that. So I guess the question then becomes, if you approve the plans, and they do exactly what they said they were doing, and pursuant to the report, that does cause stress in the tree, and the tree dies, I just find it unusual. You've told somebody they can do something, you've had them bonded, they do exactly what they said they would do, the tree dies, and now you try to cash in on the bond. I would suggest to you that may be an interesting lawsuit.
Just to follow up on that, is the staff, is staff prepared to address that fully tonight, or is that something that staff would prefer to have some more time to look into, the bondability of the tree?
We don't need any more time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Janoff.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we're getting a little too precise regarding the requirement or the suggestion that we have a bond. Is there a different way to ensure the viability of the tree that does provide for compensation to replace the tree should construction damage it to the point that it fails? Maybe bond is not the right vehicle. Maybe it's just simply insurance.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I think that would require further study, because I've never heard of that kind of insurance, which doesn't mean anything, because I'm no insurance expert. Personally, I would think that if, oh, yes, we have an insurance expert, I forgot. I would think if we were to put some teeth into the requirements of taking care of the tree during construction, and I don't know what that is, but I think we're on safer ground with that. For example, periodic inspections to see that the tree is indeed being protected. And as you notice on the front of this town hall, when you saw the protections that are up against the trees here, that kind of thing, to me, is a positive step. And I would prefer to think that the proper party could design some way to ensure as best we can that that tree is protected. I'd rather do that than look for an insurance policy, because in that sense, the insurer would want to know, what am I insuring, and how does that, what happens? That's very confusing.
Commissioner Janoff.
Yeah, so in the, in the conditions of approval, item 10B, it does say, a licensed arborist shall monitor the coast live oak tree identified during demolition construction. So the inspection and monitoring is a part of it, but what happens, question to staff, what happens if the inspecting arborist determines that the tree is being negatively affected?
We would have to make a determination based on their information as to what next steps would be, whether there's a remedy to incorporate other measures to help the, basically, continued viability of the tree during the completion of construction or following construction, or if something catastrophic happens, then that's, would be another path that we would have to go down.
So you have recourse beyond, to address a problem beyond just the monitoring?
Pursuant to the town code and the arborist report as provided.
Thank you.
So if I may, I have a question about an issue that was raised by Mr. Monkey, raised a question and said that such, I'll quote him, "I noted both parcels have sold simultaneously on two occasions in the last 15 years to identical new owners. Such events likely void the certificate of compliance on the property that was filed in 2000." And I believe that that's the act that caused the two parcels to be merged. So he's suggesting that the town consider issues concerning the entire merged lots, not just applications directed to an individual parcel. Does town attorney have any opinion about whether those events would void the certificate of compliance and whether we must consider the entire merged lot and not just the applications of an individual parcel?
So before the, if the deputy town attorney has anything to add, we appreciate Mr. Monk's position. Aaron and I actually met with Mr. Monk, discussed this issue. The town issued a certificate of compliance, saying there's two legal lots in, I believe, 2001. And so to come back and say that that now would no longer be valid because of property transactions that happened subsequently, we don't think that that's based in any legally defensible stance. And I'm not sure if the deputy town attorney has any additional comments.
Two separate lots can be owned by the same person without avoiding a certificate of compliance if it was stated that they were two separate lots.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
So I, I wanted to kind of make a comment. I didn't have a question for today. I wanted to note, as far as the view is concerned, there's already a condition in the proposed conditions of approval regarding the privacy landscaping. And then the only question is whether you agree with the actual plans that are being planted, but that's in there, and there's quite a few other terms in here for, in the conditions, 11 through 14 are all related to privacy for the Southern neighbor. So that being the case, I wanted to make a general comment about the application that I, I generally, I support this application. I have some concerns about the parking being followed through on, but legally, we can't do anything about that pursuant to our town code, and they actually do meet the requirements of parking, even if it doesn't sound very practical. You know, our hands are tied, and I think it was generous on the part of the applicant to offer to put at least the building permit in place, which is at least somewhat of a stake in the ground. It doesn't mean that they'll actually go ahead and build it, but if we're able to add that to the terms and conditions, I think it adds a lot to the good faith of the project to follow through on that, and I don't think the applicant wants to keep the parking the way it is. And this application does meet all of our town codes and requirements, so as long as there's something to help address the privacy, there's at least a good faith attempt to address the parking, and then we have adequate tree protections, I would support this project.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'll attempt, well, I will make a motion, assuming it gets a second, we can discuss that. I'll make a motion that we find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15301. Make the finding that the project complies with the residential guidelines, approve the minor residential application, MR 18008, with the conditions of approval contained in Exhibit 23, and the development plans attached as Exhibit 5, and add to the conditions that pursuant to the offer of the applicant- pursuant to the offer of the applicant that prior to the completion of the project as approved, the applicant will file a, all necessary applications to take the three existing garages on the subject property and make them into garages which otherwise comply with present And that they, that action on the pursuance of the permit be done forthwith within a reasonable time. So that would be the motion.
Commissioner Badami?
I second the motion.
Okay. Before I call the question, I just want to make sure that we have thorough discussion of all the items that have been raised. And so I wanted to maybe just come back to the tree and privacy issue. I have a hard time dealing with documents that are given to us during the course of the hearing and understanding how they will be implemented or not implemented in the drawing. And so this, this particular drawing shows a 10-foot tree, according to testimony from Mr. Jeans. So my question is, do we need, do other people feel that we need to have anything further on the privacy issue, including potentially a drawing, a scale drawing, or a drawing that shows the height of trees that would be required? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Let me make sure I understand. You're saying that if that were attached, as, to make it clear that it's part of the conditions, that would, in your judgment, perhaps something should be added?
I'm, I'm looking at this and I, there's no scale on this drawing. I would really not be comfortable with adding this without scale and documentation of how high the trees would be.
Well, what I'm saying is, we've had oral testimony as to that, which we could mark up right now, I believe, and then note that as an exhibit, unless you believe we have not got an adequate testimony as to the heights. In other words, Mr. Jeans, as I understand it, told you what he meant by that drawing.
He also stated that the trees were 12 feet as well. So I, if this were a part of the record, I would want the record to show that the privacy tree would be of minimum 12-foot height. Would the maker of the motion be open?
Yes, I would accept that.
Okay. A second there?
I would also accept that as the second motion.
Commissioner Janoff?
Just like to comment that I think that's, that's very valuable clarification for the conditions of approval, item number 13, which is, you know, telling how large or what's appropriate, but without some reference to actual numbers and dimensions, it would be hard to ensure that the privacy is, the privacy issues are set outside on both sides. And I'd just like to comment to that, I think it's as important to the applicant as it is to, to the Foxes, that, that adequate privacy is, is put in place. So I, I think a solution that's mutually satisfactory is achievable. And the other thing that I'd like to add, I am in favor of the motion as, as stated and as amended. However, I would encourage the applicant to see whether there's something more creative could be done regarding the garage spaces in the interim. Anecdotally, we've heard that the garage spaces are not actually usable. So saying that you have parking spaces on site is, is probably technically correct, but actually not practically true. So it, it's, there's possibly an interim solution between leaving the structures as is and unusable and building the brand-new garages upon, at the time that you have the means to do so, including, again, to the community development director's point, that a garage is not required. Could be that a pad of some sort could be provided so that it provides the two required spaces and more. I think your tenants would appreciate having onsite parking as much as, as the owner. So I would just encourage some creative look at what to do to be good neighbors and help to provide the parking so that you can demonstrate to your, to your neighbors who seem to have a pretty consistent complaint, that you're trying the best that you can to provide onsite parking.
Before I call the question, I'm just going to make another comment, that I will be supporting the motion. However, I want folks to understand that there were very legitimate concerns that were raised through this process, that we're dealing with two properties that are magnificent properties, that are a very important part of the heritage of Los Catos. And as such, it is very important that we listen and to all of the points that were raised and that we ensure that any future construction that goes on will respect the heritage of, of these properties. And so I appreciate the participation and all of, all of the points that were raised. And I wanted to thank the community for participating in what seemed maybe like a lot of detail, but this is extraordinarily important as these are just magnificent structures that are very important to the town. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights on this?
There are, thank you, Chair. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Okay, thank you. We have another item on the agenda, but I would suggest that we take a five-minute break and we'll come back at 9:00 PM. Thank you.
Please, we'd like to get back, get back to the hearing. Please take your seats, we'd like to continue the hearing. The Planning Commission is now back in session, and can I ask folks if you'd like to continue your conversation, please, please do so outside so that, so that we can follow. We will now move on to item number three, which is 170020 Los Cerritos Drive, Architecture and Site Application S-16-065, requesting approval for site improvements requiring a grading permit on property zoned HR1, APNs 53221012 and 013. Property owner Sandy Campbell, applicant Glenn Katz, project planner Erin Walters. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who've visited the property under consideration? Okay, are there any disclosures? Okay, Ms. Walters, I understand you'll be giving this staff report as well.
Yes, thank you Commissioner. The subject, 2.56 acre hillside properties located on the west side of Los Cerritos Drive and is developed with an existing single-family home residence, and it's also surrounded by single-family hillside homes. In 2016, the building department issued a stop work order for work that was done without permits for the subject property. The work without permits included grading outside of the LRDA, within the rear yard and driveway area. Construction of a 12-foot retaining wall in the driveway area and a construction of a seven-foot tall retaining wall in the rear yard where maximum of five feet is allowed per the hillside development guidelines and standards. Also, cutting with a maximum depth of nine feet in the rear yard and a maximum depth of 12 feet in the driveway area where four feet is allowed per the standards. And also, construction of 100 continuous linear feet of retaining wall in the rear yard and 22 continuous linear feet in the retaining wall area in the driveway area where 50 feet is allowed. So the applicant is requesting approval of an architecture and site application for the site improvements requiring a grading permit. The architecture and site application is being considered tonight by the Planning Commission because the proposal is requesting for exceptions to the hillside development standards and guidelines. Detailed discussion of these exceptions are included in your staff report, and the applicant and staff did work very closely to try to find solutions for, to remedy the work that was done without permits on site and to meet the hillside development standards and guidelines. The applicant has proposed tonight a remedy to retain the unpermitted walls and construct shorter walls in a terrace manner in front to create terrace walls in the driveway area as well as the rear yard area. The remedy also includes a buttress, addition of buttresses to the existing retaining walls in order to meet structural requirements. The applicants provided a letter of justification in Exhibit 4 and developed plans in Exhibit 8, but based on the analysis, staff is recommending denial of the application because the proposed remediation does not meet the hillside design development standards and guidelines. Although it minimizes heights visually, it does not, it does not eliminate the initial cut that exceeds the four feet, it does not eliminate the initial height of the retaining walls, it also still has work outside of the LRDA, and a portion of the 12-foot four-inch wall would be remained exposed for the proposal tonight. Staff, however, if Planning Commission finds merit of the proposed remediation, commission may grant exceptions from the hillside design guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walters, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Badami.
What alerted the building department to issue a stop work order in February of 2016? Was there a complaint?
There was not a complaint, a, an inspector went down to the site to do an inspection for the house that had building permits for remodel and found that work had been done without permits. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
If one were to deny this as you recommend, what happens?
Well, staff's recommending denial of this proposal. There's different ways to design this, to either restore or to add more terraces that would come closer towards meeting the guidelines, but the proposal tonight, staff did not recommend.
I heard you say something about, notwithstanding what they proposed to do, the work that had been done which violates our requirements would still exist, and that seems to be the case, unless you were to put the dirt back, which doesn't seem very practical. So I'm just, it doesn't, I have trouble understanding how you can simply deny something without telling somebody what to do. We've all been out to property, looked at it, awful lot of work done, a lot of walls up there. I mean, you could say rip out all the walls and start over, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to do that. So when the staff recommends denial, tell us what you would like to happen if in fact this were denied. The property still sits out there, those walls still sit out there, the pool is up there, everything's happening. What is it you would want to happen if we were to follow your recommendation?
Sure, so just moving forward, obviously, if the Planning Commission agreed with staff and ultimately denied the proposed remediation from the applicant, they would obviously have the opportunity to appeal that decision to the council. Another option would be that the Planning Commission says, well, you know, maybe we don't think that the remediation, as you put it, to bring it back to its original state and then do some other work seems logical, then you could always grant the exceptions and disagree with staff, which is perfectly fine as well. Or you could ask the applicant to come up with another solution and then review that in the future.
Where I'm confused is when you say come up with another solution, either you restore the property to what it was before, or you accept what's been done and you change it somewhat. The proposal we have before us is you change it somewhat, and I'm told by staff that you worked extensively with the applicant and you came up with a recommendation of denial. That's where I get lost, because if we said, fine, deny it, yes, they have a right to appeal to the town council, but let's just assume for a change that they upheld what we did. Then where would we be? What is it you want them to do?
Well, ultimately, if it was denied, then they would have to restore it back to its original state, and then they could come forward with additional applications. So that's, that's one option. There is more than one way to rectify any situation, so if, in your example, if you're generally okay with, let's say, the existing walls because it's going to be far more work to restore it and then redo the work, then it becomes a question of, is the majority of the Planning Commission believe that the proposed remedy is appropriate even though it has even further exceptions to do that work? Or do they want the applicant to go back and come back with a proposal that is either more inconformant with the guidelines than the current remedy or completely within the guidelines for the current remedy?
Just a final question. What I've also heard, and perhaps incorrectly in my, what I, what I thought I heard, was that everything has been remediated, perhaps not adequately, but remediated except the length of one wall, which is apparently still not, which is still uncovered. Maybe I didn't understand you correctly, but when you said they had attempted at least to remediate all these things, except you had one thing, I believe. So I'm just trying to find out if that one thing were remediated. At what point does your position change?
I wish I had an answer for you, sitting here, but the reality is, we would have to do that evaluation. I mean, frankly, from staff's perspective, the amount of work that's been done and the breadth of violation, doing that work without permit, I think it's going to be challenging in any case, but if they came back with a proposal that the remediation met, you know, so the new work met the requirements of the hillside development standards and guidelines, that may be something staff could support, but we haven't seen that, and that's not what's before you this evening.
So Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you. I think Commissioner O'Donnell has raised some interesting points, particularly about alternatives. I would prefer to hear from the applicant before we go further in discussing alternatives with staff, if that's okay? And I'd like to, to try to get to hearing the, the applicant's position and potential discussion of alternatives as well. Commissioner Janoff.
Just a quick question. I wanted a clarification with regard to buttressing of the walls. You mentioned that the existing retaining walls were, were not adequately buttressed. Are the new retaining walls adequately buttressed? Are they structurally sound?
Yes, they had a, they did structural investigation on the existing walls because they weren't permitted, and I think the applicant will speak to that. So the, the recommendation is to add the buttresses to support the walls that are out there, the new walls do not require buttresses. Thank you.
I had a factual question on the staff report. The report states that the stop work order was issued because the work included site improvements requiring a grading permit, grading of 50 cubic yards or more without receiving approval of an architectural and site application. How much more? Is it a little bit? Is it, you know, 5%, 10%? Is it, what, what are we talking about beyond 50 cubic yards? And if you don't have that, I'll also ask the applicant.
So 50 cubic yards or more requires an architecture and site application and a grading permit. They did not have an architecture and site application for grading for the site, and the work that was done without permits was 1,360 cubic yards of cut.
Thank you, that helps. Any other questions? Okay, I will invite the applicant to speak for 10 minutes, and I have four cards, you can divide the 10 minutes as, as you'd like, so please state your name and address, please.
My name is Glenn Katz, my address is 2164 Viscaya Circle in Campbell, okay? And I am here presenting on behalf of the design team that's been working with the very helpful Los Gatos planning and engineering staff and really trying to come up with some solutions to help mitigate all this. I am joined by other members of our design team to help answer some technical questions as they may come up from the commissioners. We have Mike Goodhue, who's on the civil side, who's done all the site kind of surveying work and the civil side of things. We have Dean Affeldt, who's our geotechnical engineer, who can answer questions about the grading or the soil work and anything about kind of moving the soil around or replacing the soil on site. We're also joined by Alfred Rathusen and Xiahan Zhu of ABR Engineers, who are on the structural engineering side of it. Okay, so we have the whole team here to answer questions as necessary. Okay, but let's go ahead and get on with just thinking about this specific idea, or this specific proposal. Just to give you a sense of who we're talking about, the homeowner herself is Sandra Campbell. She's a 77-year-old grandmother of six. She would have joined us tonight, but she's actually recovering from surgery at her son's home up in Oregon. She's been living here in Los Gatos for 47 years. She used to be a school teacher in Los Gatos in Santa Fe, and she's been in this home for all those years. She wants this home to be a family place, a place where she can have her grandchildren over and just really have very happy memories for them, the same way her son's growing up in the community. So she's not really going at it from a development standpoint, she's a single homeowner and she wants to continue to own the home. She was just trying to improve the home through a home remodeling project. Okay, so the home remodeling project's important to talk about because that sets up a timeline which creates some confusion for Sandy about really what was going on. The original design was started back in June of 2011, there was an initial building permit issued in November of 2012. Along the way, several revisions were approved by the building department as she continued to make changes to the design. So there were some construction revisions approved in July of 2013. In fall of 2013, a very critical thing happened then where in the pool area, where there had already been some retaining walls, which are quite tall, there are already 12-foot retaining walls that had been built around the pool area, existing long before the hillside design guidelines were in place, she basically applied to have those replaced, okay, as well as some extensions beyond them, okay? At that time, that building permit application was denied because the new walls that were proposed existed or exceeded the hillside design guidelines that came into place, you know, since the original walls had been built. Yeah, that one point about the building permit application and whether or not those walls were permitted is a point of confusion for Ms. Campbell, even to the point when I first joined the project, she was still confused over this point about whether the walls were permitted or not because she had been allowed to replace the pool walls in kind for structural reasons, okay, but she didn't have permission to go ahead and extend the walls beyond that. But honestly, I don't think she really understood that. Okay, in October 2016, we had another round of approvals where some facade revisions were approved to kind of match the as-built conditions. But really, the source of a lot of the confusion was this pool area retaining wall replacement. You can see on the plan there, the red line indicates the area where the pool area walls were originally and were replaced. For a detail that had been approved by our architect, had been approved by the city, you know, that notion of basically replacing the pool area walls was approved and was authorized, and you can sort of see in two different images on the right-hand side, kind of the original condition, which is higher than the hillside design guidelines and the replaced condition. Okay, after those walls were completed, somewhere between September 2015 and February 2016, Ms. Campbell, you know, through bad advice from her contracting team, yeah, assumed that she could continue the work that had been started on the pool retaining walls using the same detail to go ahead and extend those walls to add some other kind of area to the lot. So she really extended the walls in two different areas. There's a driveway area, so just outside the existing garage area, she pulled the wall back a little bit here, okay, and kind of created a tall wall here, again, following the original details from the pool retaining wall. She also, in this area, what we call the backyard area, kind of pulled back to create a larger area over here. In talking to Ms. Campbell, what she was trying to do is really allow sort of greater area in the driveway area for maneuvering her large SUVs and create better access towards the pool area. In the rear yard area, what she was intending to do was, she has a little golf cart, which helps with her mobility on the site, there's a little path that basically runs up the side, and she's creating a turnaround area for it back over there. So she had valid reasons for thinking about trying to increase the area, okay, but she proceeded without authorization, and I think it's sort of a point of view, sort of confusion about the existing permit, possibly in combination with just bad advice from contractors who misled her, I would say, because it was a very profitable job, and I think she asked the wrong question. She asked, can it be done, when she should have been asking, is this permissible to be done? Was it permitted to be done? But she followed that advice and the walls were built and ultimately stopped when a building inspector came to kind of inspect the house and noticed that, hey, all these additional walls had been created. Here's some pictures just of the original conditions, the conditions through the construction process, and then where we are today. So you can see in the driveway area, there were some fairly tall walls, walls that are taller than the exist, or the new hillside design guidelines would allow. Those existing walls, though, were replaced by sort of even taller walls where things got cut back. You can sort of see the current condition here. In the backyard area, it's probably not nearly as dramatic, you can sort of see the old wall back in here, which had, was a long continuous wall that had steps in it. She cut back that area, and here's the new wall, okay? And if we think about where the sort of no longer, do not meet the hillside design guidelines, it's in the intrusion into the LRDA, it's in terms of the height of the wall being greater than what is now currently allowed. It's also in terms of the length of this wall, for example, this wall over here, which has always been sort of a long continuous sweep, now wouldn't be allowed, we'd have to put a jog in the wall to go ahead and break that up a little bit, okay? But as we look at these, one of the things, as you ask about the total amount of earth that was moved, that really sort of factors into this is that, you know, because it's so steep in this area, when you pull the wall back even a few feet, if you pull the wall back five or six feet, it still contributes to a very large volume of earth, and that's why she so greatly exceeded the 50 cubic yard limitation. Okay, in terms of what we actually did in arriving in a solution, we went through a whole round of testing analysis, we did some testing using some ground penetrating radar and coring to kind of assess the walls. Mike has been working very hard on the whole site surveying side, working on the drainage side of things, and working on just all the, you know, just documenting everything in site, and, you know, we've been fortunate in that Mike had surveyed the site before the house remodel had started, so we have a very good history of the entire grading, like ever since before the project started. We reviewed the soils reports, Dean from the PRA Group went ahead and reviewed that, gave a geotechnical review, and kind of advised us about the proper sort of soil parameters that we should be using in terms of doing the structural design. Okay, and then finally, ABR Engineers, Alfred and Xiaohan have been working on a structural analysis, ultimately arriving at a wall buttressing strategy. In their analysis, they found that, given today's standards, okay, they would, and the height of the wall, which exceeds the height of the original detail that had been used in the pool area, okay, that it'd be better to reinforce those walls, and this buttressing scheme seemed to be the best way to bring them up to the current structural standards at a level of comfort with the factors of safety that we'd like to apply as a good design standard. So we came up with a solution that involved basically taking that current condition, which is relatively tall, adding some structural buttressing to, again, provide the structural support necessary, and then putting some terrace walls in front of it to try and help meet the hillside design guidelines. Okay, so wherever we're putting terrace walls, this lower wall meets the guidelines, it's no higher than five feet there, it kind of meets the appropriate distance, has the appropriate amount of soil behind it. Same thing here in the rear yard area, the rear yard area is a little bit different because the rear yard area is actually a concrete mason unit, a concrete block wall, but it's the same sort of strategy. Here's the existing condition, you sort of see the scale figure there to understand how big that is. We have some buttressing, then we have some terracing kind of in here to ultimately kind of help with the aesthetics and meet the, you know, the guidelines in terms of height and that. If we think about these and how they stack up relative to the requirements of the hillside guidelines, I think these address several issues, but not all. The ones that are very hard to address are the work that was done outside of the LRDA, because that would basically involve having to put the earth back in place. This is clearly just outside of the LRDA, it's really hard to fix in terms of putting all of the earth back in to kind of be within the LRDA, okay? In terms of the length of the wall, you could notch the wall a little bit to go ahead and kind of address that. The whole issue of the amount of cut so far exceeding the hillside design guidelines, just by the nature of what was done, it's going to exceed that 50 cubic yards, it'd be very, very hard to put it back in place without putting the soil back in place. And, you know, what we would recommend relative to that, and we did evaluate that, is that just not, it's not a practical, it's a very impactful solution, and ultimately, it's not safe and stable to do that, and we can address that in questions.
Thank you, sir. We have potentially any questions from commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell.
The very steep walls, I think one was 12 feet and one's, I forget the other, other height. When you put in the, what I'll call remedial, shorter walls, if you go back to the beginning, the reason that the tall wall was put, go back to where you were, no, go forward where you were.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. You were, you were just on it when I started talking.
Okay, I'll go back to that one. I'm sorry.
There we go. So for example, in that, which you had a pretty steep cut and butt for, and then there's the, the tall wall, which is now made somewhat nicer looking, and then you have the abutment, and then you have the, the cover of the abutment. The reason I take it that that is so steep was that it was necessary to push, in your judgment, at least not yours, but the applicant's judgment, to give yourself more room, and that's why it was so steep?
But the grade back here actually stayed the same, that hasn't changed. They literally just cut back into the wall to that distance. Soil was stable enough to actually hold that, and they just built the new wall in place to the height that was necessary to meet the existing.
But that was, wasn't that higher than the original wall?
The original wall was located more out here, so the slope came down further and then dropped down here. So part of this is, when this new wall was built, it was pushed back, you know, anywhere from like six feet to 10 feet, it all got pushed back, and when it got pushed back, it became taller.
Well, what I'm asking you is what?
Oh, yeah.
If you want to come to the mic and identify yourself.
My name is Michael Goodhue, I'm a civil engineer, land surveyor, and as Glenn stated, I've been working on the project since 2012, and honestly, I was a bit aghast when I came out there in 2017 and saw the improvements. But I think it's important to look at this project overall, is a very steep site to begin with, and very tall walls that were installed in the 70s or 80s or whenever they were. Sandy tried pushing these walls back, but in my mind, she didn't, she didn't change the overall scale of the project or the visual appearance of the project, because the entire project is kind of down in a hole, so everybody is looking down, right? So visually, you know, I think the intention of the hillside grading ordinance is basically to not have walls looming above you and, and create an aesthetic issue. In my mind, the walls that were put in should never have been put in, the most recent ones, but going back to the intent of the hillside ordinance, I don't think they're impacting the visual problem. Probably, may back up a little bit to answer the question that was asked, though. Most of the walls were ranging from six to 12 feet high, and there is a wall that's as much as 14 feet high, in answer to your question. But I think if you look at each of the cross-sections, if you go through them one by one, it actually shows where, what the existing wall was and what the new wall is, and you can get a good idea if you, if you leaf through the cross-sections, you can, you can see that.
What I'm asking you, and perhaps it's, it's too naive a question, what I'm wondering is, from the time you had the original drawings, I think, before, and then you have the drawings now after?
Yes.
And you're saying that the slope, for example, of, of the earth there is
Right.
same as it was before?
Yes.
But the wall, abutting it or holding it up, is higher than it was before?
That's correct.
And why was that?
Because they pushed the wall back. You have, you have a slope coming down like this, and you push the wall back and holding the grade here, the wall just becomes taller as you push it back.
They pushed it back, again, why? To have more room?
Yes, that's my understanding, I mean, I can't answer for Sandy.
So the solution here, though, takes away that, that room, doesn't it?
Yes.
By having the abutment and then the facade.
Yes, it does. And I, I think it's important to consider, as you said before, you know, what, what's the end game? You know, what is the solution here? And honestly, I've personally been struggling with that, and what we've come up with is our best solution to it, because really what you're talking about, to put it back to what it was, would be walls that, that still don't meet the hillside ordinance, they would still be 10 or 12 feet tall.
Well, let me ask you one more question, because I went out and looked at it, and one of the things is, as you come in the back, and that wall runs quite a distance, is it correct that no, no improvement is suggested for that extension of the wall?
I'll let Glenn answer that. I'll let Glenn answer that.
Let's go back to, so, so back to, you're talking about the long wall that runs up along the side here. That's the one, that's the longest length.
Right, right.
So what's happening there is, in this area, okay, where we're kind of showing the cut in there, there we would be breaking down. We would be wanting a terrace wall in this area, in the green area, where it's exceeding the cut depths. So we'd be remediating here. It would still, the existing wall here on that, which has existed, you know, would stay the same. But in the area where it hadn't been cut back, we'd then remediate that by putting a terrace wall in front of it to go through again, break it up and provide the proper height to meet the Hillside.
So the long length that you're not doing anything to, you're saying is as it was originally?
Yeah. This length in here is as it was originally. It got painted, I think, at the start, but the rules were up to this point right here. In my experience, you could actually see where the break happens. The wall used to be here, and it's really from here forward down there. The new wall is created, and we propose to go through. Oh, I'm sorry. I am sorry. And then, so in that new area, like, we will be remediating that, or we're proposing remediating that by putting a terrace wall in front of it to, again, help that area meet the Hillside Design Guidelines.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson.
So if I understood you correctly, there, there's, you don't see it as a feasible option to actually bring, since the wall got pushed back, which also made it higher, to bring it forward a few feet, and that way it could be shorter because the slope is coming down like that?
Well, the issue about trying to put the wall back or put the earth back, that really has to do more with sort of the, the safety of the soil that you go ahead and put back. And we can have our geotech engineer sort of address this, but generally, when you remove earth, okay, then try to put it back, the new earth that you're putting back isn't compacted, it doesn't have the same characteristics as the earth that you took away. So it's our position that it's actually less safe to put the earth back than it is to leave the engineered retaining wall in there, which is a controlled condition that we can anticipate. Trying to put earth back and try to stabilize it, even if you do your best engineering work, is really hard to guarantee that it has the original conditions and might create a sliding hazard at some point. So the best thing from, again, it's not great that it got to this position, but given this position, the best thing to do is leave that wall in place and then try to do things to, you know, mitigate.
Well, supposing that the commission couldn't get past this, and, and you, and, and it also didn't get past our town council, I don't, I don't know what will happen. But, and, and you had to meet the, the requirements of the, isn't there a way to engineer it to put the wall back where it was to make it safe?
Actually, Dean, can we have, have you that, address that? It's, I think it'd be difficult to sort of guarantee that it would be as safe, and it might create a liability issue. But let's go ahead and have Dean address that.
Hi, I'm Dean Affelt, principal engineering geologist with PRA Group, the geotechnical firm that looked at this. And the issue with respect to trying to change this back, remove that wall, and then maybe move the wall down lower to put earth back in, Glenn's correct, where what you're trying to do is, you've got a stabilized condition now. And in fact, you've been improved condition in what was before in the sense that we've got a strong wall up there now. And so now, if you're saying about taking, taking that wall back out, moving it out, maybe put a short wall and then put dirt in between, it's difficult to do that and put that wall, because what I would have to do is, I actually have to make a kind of a keyway, not just the wall, but I got to make a keyway. Oh, why don't you flip that to one of those sections there?
Sure.
We had the picture of the wall. Uh, one more. There you go. Good. Okay, that's good, good. And me, we're trying to do, say, if you want to take this and bring the slope back out here to this wall, it's not just, you know, build a wall and then tuck dirt back in there. That doesn't work. You can't do that. And what you have, even if you had, you'd have to make a keyway. I'd have to make another keyway down here and dig it out to keep this dirt in, and then what I have to do is, I have to go up and make steps, steps, and be able to compact that dirt back in. I'm disturbing a lot more earth, a lot more area, in order to get back that configuration and make it stable. Right now, it's a very stable configuration with every channel.
Okay, so a follow-up question on the, on the stable situation. So you just showed us plans that involved adding buttresses because it's, I'm assuming because it wasn't stable enough, and so how did it get to be stable without the buttresses?
Well, when they built the wall before, and they built originally, the original wall they built there, they just made the cut. If I'm, think I'm understanding what you're saying. As far as when the original construction, you've got an original slope, configured slope, all goes down there, you make a cut and you build a wall. Okay? And as far as whatever standard that was. But now we, that's all been changed now. That's gone. That dirt's now moved back, we're now to another position. I just can't put dirt and scab it back in, so to speak.
So my, my question was about the stability, though. You, you said it's stable now, but then there's this addition of these buttresses, so that seems like conflicting statement to me.
Okay, so let me try and clarify that. The wall with the retaining wall as built, okay, is probably more stable than the original earth, okay, but is still not up to today's building code and the standard that you would like, which is why we're proposing the buttressing solution. So if the existing wall stays, we definitely do propose that the buttressing solution be put into place, because that will bring the retaining wall as built, you know, with these modifications, up to the current building code, to the standard that we'd all like to guarantee that it's stable. It's probably not in any imminent, imminent danger of failing now, but still, to today's building codes and the factors of safety that we like to apply to guarantee that nothing's going to happen, we would highly recommend just going ahead with a buttressing solution to make sure that it's up to today's building code, and then, you know, an engineer could sign off on it and say, that wall's A-OK.
Whereas if you didn't have that, it might not be.
I would still say that the wall, even as engineered today, is probably more stable than the original earth, okay? And it's definitely more stable than replacing the earth, but not as stable as we would like it to be to today's building code. And the building code changes year after year. It's, the requirements today are far greater than what the requirements were 10 years ago or when the walls were originally built. So we'd like to get it up to today's standards.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I had some questions along a different line, if I may. I understand that the, the owner is not here and that, as the applicant, you are speaking on behalf of the owner.
Mm-hmm.
So I wanted to understand a little bit more about how we got to where we are right now.
Sure.
So first of all, has work continued on the wall since 2016?
Not since the stop work order. The only work that's happened on the wall since then has been the destructive testing that was done to go through and do the coring and a little bit of destructive testing to kind of verify the steel within that. But the, the wall itself hasn't continued since the stop work order. That has said, you know, that's just been left alone since then.
Has the prior contractor that you referenced still been retained, and are they still doing work on the property?
To the best of my knowledge, they are not.
So the workers that I saw yesterday, were they working on the wall? What were they?
They were working on parts of the irrigation system. Evidently, part of the irrigation broke with the freeze, so they were replacing some pipes and valves. So that wasn't wall work, at least as I've been told by, Sandy has someone who kind of supervises the work on site, that it was really related to the irrigation system, not to the walls.
Okay. And, and so if this situation was uncovered in February 2016, why has it taken three years to come forward with a proposal to fix it?
Okay, it's been a little over two. Well, I guess.
It was February?
Yeah, it's almost three years. It's just been a long process in terms of working through, I think we've been through five cycles with the different cycles of the AD, Architectural and Site Permit. First, documenting everything that the staff asks us to document very carefully, and then, you know, proposing the solution, ultimately bringing all the documents. And it took quite a while to get kind of soils engineering on board and get the structural analysis. I think there's just been layers and layers of things as we got deeper into the project that just kind of added more complexity and things that needed to be documented. So it just took a long time to pull all that together.
Okay. So coming back to question actually that Commissioner O'Donnell had of staff earlier about, you know, what are the alternatives? In the staff report, it states that several alternatives were considered and presented. I'm not seeing that. I'm seeing one alternative being presented. Is that correct?
The idea of
Presenting one solution, you're not presenting us with alternatives.
I think that's a fair characterization. The idea of doing the terracing with the buttressing behind it is, you know, pretty much, it is our recommended solution.
So for instance, the solution that was proposed for the rear yard, is there a reason why that could not also be implemented on the driveway?
It is similar in many ways in terms of the buttressing and even the terracing in here. The big difference is that the rear yard area is a block wall, it's a concrete wall on the front yard area, but I think the essence of the solution is the same. It's, it's the same, put a buttress in place and put some sort of a terrace wall in front of it to go through, and again, try to cut the height down to the Hillside Design Guideline.
So for instance, could more than one terrace be employed, as is employed in the rear?
You could add another terrace to it. That starts to address that issue of it's cutting into what the original intent was in terms of, you know, it's taking away more of the area, but as necessary, that could certainly be implemented. There's no, there's no engineering feasibility reason that can be used. So doing something like that, it would address the height deviations from the Hillside Design Guidelines. You know, it still doesn't address the LRDA concerns and the overcutting concerns.
How much would it address the height concern in the current proposal if you were to add another terrace?
I think that right now, like in this illustration, I believe, this wall is 12 feet tall, that wall's five feet tall, so you're seeing seven foot exposed right there. If you put another terrace in there, then you could break it more evenly and have two different walls where each of them was less than five feet. So, you know, that's certainly possible in terms of doing that as a way to, again, it'll address the height concerns, which are part of the reason staff is, you know, recommending against this, but it's not addressing all the Hillside Design concerns.
Right. Okay. The buttress system, I'm trying to find that on the drawings. Where, where does that exist on the drawings that we have in front of us?
It doesn't exist in the drawings that are on the wall. Those are all the civil drawings. It should have been in the packet. Aaron, did it end up inside the, what got submitted as one of the exhibits? Because we did go ahead and submit some preliminary designs for the buttress, you know, to, to engineering to go ahead and take a look at. I'm just not sure if it made it into your packet.
It wasn't a part of the development plan, so it's not in the packet.
Okay, so there, there are some, our engineering team actually has those calc's and some of those sketches.
So if, if, maybe either with a supplementary drawing or one of the existing drawings, could you show us on one of the drawings that we're considering where the buttresses are placed? Because I don't have any record of that.
Yeah, could I, guys, say something as an aside? You know, our, our primary concern was to come up with an aesthetic solution, and I think that any one of these terrorist walls can be buttressed. So we weren't so much concerned about the mechanics of it as it, as it is trying to get closer to the Hillside ordinance in appearance and aesthetics.
Right. I'm, I'm concerned about the many, many feet of a very, very tall wall, and I'm not seeing any record of where the buttressing is actually going to occur.
Sure. Let's go back in, oops, here. Okay, so basically, in the tallest area of the wall, kind of back up in here, okay, the idea is the buttresses are being added in this area, and I believe, are they about every five feet, Shawan? Every six? About every five feet. So the idea is to have a buttress about every five feet coming down in that area.
Over, over how many lineal feet?
Any idea what that is right offhand? About 120 feet? Okay, so about 120 feet back over here with these buttresses coming down in that area. Back over here, it's over this green area right here, basically. See if I can see it here. Yeah, in, C7 shows basically the locations of the new walls, which you can basically see in C7.
Well, I was asking specifically about the buttressing? And where is that placed?
Yeah.
It could, but it doesn't.
No, we, we, we could definitely show that. I think as part of the plans we were preparing that, you know, planning and engineering asked us, we were really mostly focusing on the grading itself. You know, going through and documenting more carefully the buttressing system and specifically the locations is something we could add. It just hasn't been done yet. I think we did analysis to prove that conceptually it would work and that you can reinforce the walls, but the detailed plan for where the buttresses would be hasn't been developed yet. That would go in as part of the whole building permit.
Okay, thank you. Those are the questions that I have. Any other commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Tavanna.
So I'm still trying to get, wrap my brain around the whole timeline of this project. So I see that there was a stop work, stop work permit, or stop, or issued a stop work order in February of 2016.
Mm-hmm.
But then I see that in 2017 was when all the modifications and grading were, were made. Is that correct?
No, the, all the
Am I misinterpreting that?
They, they were done in that period between September 2015 and February 2016. That's, that's when the work actually occurred. Past February 2016, there's been a lot of documentation, okay, of the process, but the work itself all occurred within that window from September to Feptem, February.
Okay, so it says here, the work was completed on the project site in 2017 without permits, site grading and cutting of 1,300 cubic square yards of earth in two areas. Am I, am I misunderstanding this?
Is that in the, may I ask, is that in the staff report or is that in the applicant's letter?
This is in the scope of work, such a letter of justification from.
Exhibit four.
Exhibit four.
Okay, thank you.
Then if, if it's saying 27, that's a, that's a mistake on my part in terms of writing that letter.
Okay.
It was, it was all within this period. Given the long period of time, I probably slipped a urine there somewhere, which I apologize for.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Janoff.
So I'm just a little bit confused about existing versus new and what the remediation areas are specifically. So I just wanted to, to be clear, is it just the areas highlighted in blue and green that are proposed to be terraced to meet the height restrictions of the Hillside Development Guidelines?
The areas in blue and green, those were the new walls were extended, and the area of remediation is actually a little bit less than that, because part of the new wall won't require the terracing.
Because it's?
It's, it's, it's below the Hillside
It's less than five feet in height.
Exactly.
Okay, so we aren't talking about making any terraces along the, the very, very long expanse of walls that are already?
No, that existing wall.
So that's outside the purview of what we're talking about.
Exactly. It's, it's really just back in the crux here, and you can sort of see the steepest areas there. It's just in those areas.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and we will now give the public some time to comment on this. I have one card from Sasha Brode, I believe, at, yes, please state your name and address for us.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sasha Brody. We live right behind Mrs. Campbell at 207 Vista de Sierra, a property, a butts her property, and basically, we share a fence and entire backyard faces her property. We were aware that Mrs. Campbell was doing construction. She's been doing it for a really long time. She, I think, remodeled her house a few times, and as far as we know, she's been doing yard work for a long time, which she did notify neighbors, I'm not sure exact timeline, but several years ago, that she was going to do, you know, major renovations to the landscaping. Our question is, if you look at the plans, we share a, we share a fence, and along that fence runs a, like a storm drain pipe. And so just, you know, hearing what you guys were talking about and all the issues that the issues that were brought up about grading and to code, I'm no expert, but our main concern is because we're directly downhill from Mrs. Campbell, and so she's above us, all the water drains down. There is a drain that is between our properties right at the fence line that has always had problems, and, you know, especially now in this weather with us being like in a funnel where all the water runs through our property, you know, without knowing what's going on and what kind of grading has been done, my concern is, you know, is there flood possibility or mudslides, given that we are directly in the, kind of, the water path?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you for your comments. I have one more card, Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. Uh, how can I say this? It was stated that this meets the aesthetic requirements of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. My understanding of the Hillside Development Standard Guidelines is that the intent is to minimize grading and to retain as much as possible the existing natural terrain. The solution that's been provided neither meets the standards for grading in the Hillside Design Guidelines nor that intent of the Hillside Design Guidelines. And it's not clear to me from what has been said, I mean, often we're told that engineering can solve any problem, no matter how steep the wall is or whatever, how much the fill is. So my question is, is it possible to remediate this back to what it was before the unauthorized grading was done? Not necessarily by removing all the retaining walls, but making intermediate retaining walls, filling that slope in so that you come out with a stable hill, but you've brought back the natural topography. In other words, you're burying the retaining walls. To me, if I were sitting up there, I would be asking for some kind of technical review that could provide possible other solutions that would get closer to what the Hillside Standards are for grading. In talking with, with staff, it was my impression that, uh, that's possible, but that the applicant was not willing to come up with that kind of a design.
Thank you. A question, yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
I had, looking at this report, which I'm sure you've looked at too, there was one estimate of $90,000, and I think that related to the proposal. I'm not totally sure.
Yeah, probably.
The proposal you're suggesting is perhaps a better proposal, I assume would cost considerably more.
I assume it would too, but, you know.
I'm not saying that's, that's neither here nor there.
That's another issue.
To get a, a sense of feel, because at some point, uh, one of the things that I would take into consideration is the likelihood of, of a cure being done. In other words, if you come up with a cure that costs $500,000, it may be a great cure, and it may not get done. So at, at least I think some weighing has to be done as to cost versus the likelihood of, of it being done. I'm not in position to do that, but I, that would be something I'd be concerned about.
I think what I was suggesting is probably the best of all possible worlds of bringing it back to what it naturally was. I assume that there are other solutions that can be done, other designs that can be done that will meet the Hillside Design Guidelines in terms of the grading and the cut and fill that is left exposed. Uh, we do fill all the time on projects and it's compacted, so I think it's possible. I, I just, I would, I don't know how you ask this, but I would want to have some alternative designs and it
What do you see as a concern? What do you see about curing the LRDA problem?
I'm not an engineer, but again,
No, I understand.
We see things all the time where steep slopes are filled, that they, they went out past and they built a wall and they filled it in. Where, if you ask them to come back to the LRDA where, where it's not outside there, uh, I'm sure there are engineering ways to do it. It's a question of time, effort, and cost. And also, uh, I can't give you an answer because I don't see plans in front of me that show me what it would look like and what would need to be done. Uh, but I don't think you should be making a decision without having a better knowledge of all of those, those things and issues, because this is our hillside, and, and this is a relatively flat lot that has a lot of retaining walls on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Okay, I have no other cards, so at this point, I'd like to invite the applicant back. You have five minutes to address any of the further questions or concerns that have been raised.
Very good. Okay, thank you. So regarding some of the specific concerns raised, on the issue of the drainage and the adjacent property, that's something that actually Mike from engineering and Mike Goodhue from our civil staff have actually been working on and talking about quite a bit in terms of what needs to be done to guarantee that the drainage is proper from the site and there isn't some sort of a flooding problem for the adjacent property. So that's actually being addressed between the engineering staff and Mike Goodhue. They've, they've sort of thought about that and kind of came up with some specific, like in things that are implemented kind of in the proposed plans to really sort of guard against any sort of a flooding thing. They're, they're trying to take care of that drainage issue. Regarding the whole issue of the hillside and again, restoring the hillside, I would differ a little bit in the characterization. I don't think there was ever an unwillingness to explore different options. It's just sort of, this was always the apparent, like best option in terms of how to do things in a way that would meet most of the Hillside Guidelines as best we could, understanding that it would be impossible to meet them all, and do it in a very pragmatic way. Do it in a way that was practical, that would be buildable, that would be implementable, that would also be less disruptive on the neighborhood. Because the whole idea now that, given that what's happened, if we did come back with 1,500 cubic yards of earth, which would be somewhere around, is that 30 trucks?
136.
136 trucks worth of earth kind of come on in there, then all the concrete work and all the retaining work. The whole process of basically trying to restore all that is itself a very disruptive project, that it has a big impact on the neighborhood. So again, I don't justify it that way, but want to point out that even trying to restore it is not necessarily a great solution in terms of the overall impact, besides being sort of very costly. So the idea of the solution that is proposed, again, you know, doesn't meet all the different Hillside Design Guidelines. I think it meets the intent of at least the visual side, and I hearken back to sort of what Mike said. If you, in fact, when you visited the site, the notion that it really is a very steep valley that the hill, that the house is built into, that even though the walls did get moved back, like, I don't think it significantly changed the character of that valley because it was a very enclosed valley with very steep walls on two sides. Now, it's a little wider at the base, but it's still a very steep valley with the, the kind of hillside walls on the two sides. So, oh, please, Mike, yes.
The other thing is, to the LRDA, the, the, the property as it was, the LRDA is basically at the base of the existing walls, and the slopes coming down from all the hillsides were, were two to one or steeper. So it's really hard on this project to actually talk about the LRDA because it's pretty much where those steep walls are, where those steep walls were. And if you were to actually look at the LRDA from the original site, it would be some distance, quite a bit further into the flat area than the walls that were built in the 70s or 80s. And as far as putting the dirt back in answer to the lady's question, it's very difficult to put the dirt back at that steep of a slope and have it, have it stay in place. So I think what we're trying to do is mimic the, um, that slope with the terraced walls in the locations where they actually made the walls taller. I think that was the main, the main thing. And, and to answer the storm drain question, originally there was a storm drain on Vista de Sierra that actually runs right underneath her house. And Sandy actually installed a storm drain that picks up all of her water and routes it around and into the alley beside her house and into the storm drain system. So Sandy has done substantial storm drain improvements to route most of the water that's coming down the hill away from her house. The, the pipe that, that's there now is just taking very localized water, and it's, it's a very bad concept to put a storm drain system underneath the house, but it's not something that Sandy did. I heard through the grapevine that it was actually at some point installed by the town. Don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I heard secondhand through some field guys. So I don't know if that's true, but the key here is, is that Sandy has done everything she can to, to try to make sure that her runoff didn't go down to Vista de Sierra in an uncontrolled manner.
Okay, thank you. Your time has expired, but we'd like to have some follow-up questions. Commissioner Janoff?
Just a quick question. Do your remediation plans for the terraced walls bring the front of the lowest wall back to the, the previously existing wall that was removed in order to, to do the big cut back?
It doesn't go as far as the original location.
Would you have any issue bringing it back to the, the walls that were removed to, to enable that cut?
I think that the applicant would have an issue in terms of trying to pull it back that far. You know, so I think her preference would be to go ahead and do the terracing, you know, bringing it in as necessary to create the proper terracing in the height, but still to preserve some of that area. But Mike?
Can I answer that question?
Yeah.
At least get it better characterized. So, I mean, that, that's a really good idea, and I think that, that's something that probably could be done, but the question is, we would only want to bring it back to the point where we would be in compliance with, with the Hillside Ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Because if you, if you bring it all the way back to where it was, it may, may be possible that we could actually make it closer and keep it within the Hillside Ordinance. What makes it really complicated and confusing is, is that even before she did any of this unpermitted retaining wall work, these were very tall retaining walls that never met the ordinance. So I think that's kind of the crux of all the confusion is, you know, where do we go from here? We have a project that was actually, started off with walls that didn't meet the ordinance. She made those taller, in some cases, moving them out further to meet the Hillside Ordinance, I think was the intent that we were trying to, trying to do in our plan. So the, the answer is, yes, we'd like to do that, and yes, we'd like to address that, but it may have been addressed in most cases. I don't know.
That, that's, that's fine.
You can look at the cross-sections. Each one of the cross-sections, there's an existing wall.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? So I have another question. I'm trying to understand the driveway and the mitigation on the driveway. On page seven of the staff report, there's a table at the bottom of the page, and it says that the mitigated retaining wall height maximum would be addition of a seven foot, four inch wall in front of a section of a 12 foot, four inch wall. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct in terms of the wall that would be added would be seven foot four. Then we get into the actual driveway height and the exposed height at, when it's completed.
So how would that seven foot, four inch wall be in compliance with the Hillside Design Guidelines?
I think the wall itself, when built, would be seven foot four exposed, but by the time the fills added to the top of it, the driveway, the paving, all that type stuff, I think we're actually going to be like at that five foot.
Okay. We'll follow up with staff on that. The question about, that Commissioner Janoff raised about an alternative, is that an alternative that you explored or that is, or is it fall under the category of infeasible where you've categorized, you know, other suggestions as infeasible?
What was the specific suggestion? Just so I could be clear about which one we're talking about.
I'm going to ask Mr. Janoff to restate it.
The question was, would you be willing to bring the, the shortest retaining wall, the ones closest to the house, back to their original location before you did the big cut and fill?
Okay, so then what's the question? Is it feasible or is it?
Question is, is it an alternative that you explored and is it feasible?
From an engineering standpoint, it's feasible. It's one thing we didn't explore in terms of bringing it fully back because the applicant, again, was trying to sort of create some area. You know, so we explored, or what we focused on was a strategy to go through and meet the height guidelines of the Hillside Design Guideline from the point where the walls, like, had been cut back to, to try and, you know, kind of pull that way. So, yeah, it's, it's from an engineering standpoint feasible, but ultimately, then you, you'd basically be, you'd having walls that sort of exceed the Hillside Design Guidelines or actually go even further than what the Hillside Design Guidelines require. So to put them all the way back, well, at some level it would, it would be going further than the Hillside Design Guidelines would require. In other areas, though, just even putting the walls back where they were would require walls which are taller than the Hillside Design Guidelines because those walls started out taller than the Hillside Design Guidelines allowed because they had been built years before.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We will now close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if commissioners have questions of staff. Let's start with that.
So staff is recommending denial of the application in hand. I don't want to put ideas out that aren't actual, actually true, but is it, is it fair to say that there is a solution that staff would, would find acceptable with perhaps an exception? I mean, there's, there's, the, the cut's already been done. I mean, that, that, that grading issue has already been done, but, so that, that's probably something that won't satisfactorily be remediated. So there, there is likely going to be some exception. Is there, is, did, did you have a sense that there were other options that, that would be acceptable, but also checked off more of the, the, the exceptions that they're asking for?
Um, yes. So, um, staff, there's a section, there's sections of the wall that are still above five feet, so that was a concern. Also, there's, it, it could be brought back to, as you discussed, where the original walls were. So at least bring the terracing out to where that LRDA was established before. So those were two items that were not fully brought out through this plan.
And I would just add that, you know, had they proposed, which, you know, I think you heard clearly from the applicant, you know, doesn't change what has happened, and if you go back to the same amount of space you had, then you're paying to basically get no increase in usable area, which is neither here nor there from staff. But if they had come in and said, you know, we're going to put the walls back where they were, refill them back in the dirt, it's engineering, from an engineering perspective, it's feasible. We actually probably would not have brought it to the planning commission. We would have just approved that at staff level or through a building permit because that's the only remedy and the simplest remedy that doesn't create any additional impact above what was previously done and brings it back to how it previously looked.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
This is a very, very difficult question because on the one hand, it can be a punitive exercise, and that is, it wouldn't have been this way if you'd gotten the permit because we wouldn't have approved that, so let's go back there. The, the other one is not so punitive, but it's to accomplish something. And I'm kind of torn between two because I don't, I don't see any great advantage in saying, darn it, you shouldn't have done it, and we're going to make you take it back to where it was. I don't know what that accomplishes. It punishes, but I'm not sure that's our job to punish. Certainly, the, the town can adopt penalties and other things. We don't do that. So we have to say, if we want you to move it backwards or whatever, then there has to be a good purpose of it. And when you look at what those walls were before they touched it, those were bad walls. And in fact, what they're proposing now are better walls and more attractive walls. There may be something that we could do to the proposal, but I, I am not going to support what I consider to be simply a punitive exercise, notwithstanding that one could decide that they knew or should have known what, what they were doing was wrong, and therefore we want them to take it back to where it was. I just don't think, personally, I just don't think that accomplishes anything. So I, I throw that out because it's more of a discussion point. This is very, very difficult. When I read your report and you said you recommended denial, I thought, well, that's really swell. What the heck does that mean? And I'm still at the same point. I will get no satisfaction out of saying, we're coming up with a Cadillac, it used to be Cadillac, it's probably something else now, remedy that's going to cost $500,000, and it's not going to get done. If in fact, the proposal now is 90, and I'm surprised if it's only 90, that's a lot of money, particularly, you know, depends so many times on who it is, but it's a lot of money. So just for purposes of our discussion, I would like to think we could talk, discuss how to make things better, but not focus on punishing.
Thank you. Commissioner Janoff?
Yeah, just to clarify, the purpose of my question in asking whether they would be willing to bring their retaining walls closer to the home had less to do with being punitive than if, if you've got a seven foot, four wall, you need to have an additional punitive than if, if you've got a seven-foot-four wall, you need to have an additional terrace to bring that height down to within the five-foot hillside requirement. So, the question wasn't so much punitive, is, if you've got, if you've got only so much distance in lineal feet to work with to, to introduce terraces, and you self-limit to what space you want to have, and you can't reduce the wall height because you're self-limiting the, the lineal feet out to, to create terraces, then you have to be able to pull that, give, give yourself more room for the steps to come down in a, in a, in a gradual manner. So the question had to do more with having the distance to be able to add another terrace in order to bring those intermediate wall heights down to meet the, the hillside guideline.
Should I just ask her a question?
Sure.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding. I thought that if you left, she put the walls where she put the walls, so she could get more territory. When you put in the buttress walls, you lose territory, you lose usable space. If you push it further back, seems to me, you gain more usable space on the flat, obviously not on the hillside. So, if you move it back, the question is, you're going to have to buttress it. So by moving it back, do you mean including the buttress? Because if you mean including the buttress, you're going to go on the other side of the existing walls, and therefore, you're going to rip out the existing walls.
Yeah, and I'm talking about going the other direction.
Okay, so you're going, you're leaving the, the distance the same as the existing wall?
So if I'm looking at the, the illustration that's on the wall, where the man is standing on the, on the picture that has the landscaping, that wall in front of him may or may not be, let's, let's say for argument's sake that he's really tall and that's a seven-foot-four wall. So, if we want to bring that height down, you need to put an intermediate wall there, and there may not be enough space on the, on the area where he's standing to put another wall, and then to bring it down to, to wherever he's standing. So, my question is, would you be willing to increase that, that landing, so that you could put the intermediate terrace to bring that seven-foot-four wall down?
So that question, and I understand what you're saying now, does that question then assume that the height of that buttress wall is fixed? In other words, I, I, we haven't asked-
Yes.
-whether it could go down, or maybe you did.
No, I, I'm, to be honest, I don't see any point in talking about removing the wall that's been built. But I do, I, I do agree that the height of the wall is only part of the problem, but it's the only problem that we're able to address right now, because we can't, the, the scarring of the, of the landscape has already happened. So there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of point in talking about putting it back to where it is. So my issue is then, okay, well, we've got a 12-foot wall, or a seven-foot wall, or whatever height that's above the five-foot, that's, that's permitted, how do you get, when you're looking at it from, from the vantage point of the man standing in the flowers, how do you get those walls to, to be lower in a terraced fashion, such that they do meet the hillside requirement development guidelines? Said another way, I'm looking at page nine of the staff report, in the conclusion summary, the first paragraph is, is the summary of the four issues that are, that are unresolved. Personally, I'm willing to say that grading outside LRDA has been done, we can't fix that. Or the fix would be an infill that may not make sense. The second one, exceeding the maximum allowable depth cut four yards, that, that cut's been made, so we can't really fix that. However, the next two, making sure that the maximum allowable retaining wall height meets the five-foot requirement, we can do by additional terracing. And we can also request that there be breaks in the wall, such that we don't have more than a 50-foot continuous length of wall. So what I'm saying is, it's not, it's a very complicated situation, some remedies just don't make sense cost or logistically, but some can be done to get it back to within the spirit of the hillside design.
Let me ask you this, and then Chair will, excuse me for the question, but perhaps what we should do is send it back and ask for the remedy that you are suggesting, because I don't, I think, I don't think that's punitive, and therefore, I'm willing to consider anything that accomplishes a good besides punishing, and that's what that does. I, as I sit here, don't know how that works, because we haven't done that, they haven't shown us that. But that's certainly one possibility, to send it back with instructions on what we want, if the group of us thought that would be, accomplish a purpose.
I, I might just add my thoughts to this, because I think, I'm thinking very much along those lines. I think that a, a quick denial of this without incorporating the thinking that we've put into it, and starting the process over, would, would not necessarily get us a better result. And I think that despite assertions from the applicant, I don't think they've put enough thought into this, and I don't think that they've considered enough of the alternatives, and I don't think that they have considered addressing some of the other issues, such as how to break up 100 feet of wall when that's way out of guideline as well. I also think that the documentation we've been provided is insufficient, it doesn't show a lot of where the construction would occur in terms of the buttressing. And I also think that the wall height explanation of seven-foot, four inches versus five inches hasn't been adequately explored either. So, from, I'm looking at something that I see as very incomplete, and my preference with something incomplete would be to give the applicant an opportunity to complete it, complete the analysis, complete looking at alternatives, and bring us back. I'm not in favor, actually, of, of, of giving the benefit of the doubt to the applicant, since they've taken three years to get to this point, looks to me like it's been very, very slow movement on their part. And I also think that the, there's been a misinterpretation of the meaning of the hillside design guidelines, to focus only on an aesthetic from the point of view of other properties, when in fact, our guidelines are very clear that we're trying to eliminate cutting and scarring massive amounts of hillside. And so, I think that, I don't, I don't think we're at a point where I could be comfortable making a, a denial or an approval without further information from the applicant. Commissioner Hanson?
So, I was going to completely agree with Chair Huedis, and I also agree completely with Ms. Cantana's statement. I, I don't feel like we've seen enough alternatives. This has been an egregious violation of our hillside design guidelines. I think that, that's even as of today, the intent of the hillside design guidelines hasn't been well-understood. You know, building more into the hillside, taking more, is, is not the intent of it, it's supposed to, you know, be the way it was. Having said that, I, I also agree with Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Janoff, that it may not make sense to put it back where it was, but I would like to see a range of alternatives, including putting it back, and understand how bad is that versus this. But I feel like all we saw today was just what the applicant wants to do. And, you know, considering the, the, you know, the level of violation of the hillside design guidelines, I think we deserve to see more than that in order to make a decision.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yeah, I would just like to add that it seems like up until this point, Sandy or the applicant has done pretty much what she's wanted to do on this property. And from my standpoint here, it doesn't make sense to, you know, to what Commissioner O'Donnell said, punitive damage the applicant and make them put it back the way it was, but it just seemed like it was more of a land grab to make more usable space throughout the last 40-plus years. So with that said, I can't support or deny this today. Just want to throw that out there for the record.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I think you were up first.
I'm going to try a motion, and if we can get a second for it. It gives us something to hang things on if we, if we want to do that. But I would move that we continue this matter to a date certain, so that we can deal with certain, well, with a number of things, and I'm just going to throw out a couple of them. One is what Commissioner Janoff was talking about, which is lowering the, the retaining walls in front of the existing walls. In other words, that doesn't mean tear down the, the walls that have been there all the time that are too high, but the proposed walls in front of those, lower those to, to five feet. Also, I think that the Chair had suggested some things the Chair wants to see, and I would ask the Chair to elucidate those after we make the motion, so we can put, put them on there. And then, I would, the date certain ought to be a reasonable time, but ought not to allow this to drag, to drag on, which there, appearance, at least at the moment, that it has dragged on. So the motion then would simply be that we continue it to that date certain, which we'll have to identify, to allow the applicant more time to give more proposals that are more consistent with the guidelines, and in particular, the four matters that were discussed, two of which were acknowledged as not being what we would expect a response on, so it would be the last two. So that's the motion. It's rather rough in its form, but that's the motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Badami?
I'll be supporting it, but, but earlier, I just wanted to make a statement when we were talking about punitive action and cost factors. When one hires a contractor, you sign agreements, and you verify that they carry professional liability insurance. That covers the cost factors and remediation for any type of faulty design and workmanship. I don't know if that was done in this case, but I think it's a responsibility of homeowners to follow through in this type of thing when they hire contractors. But just a statement I wanted to make, I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Janoff?
I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications for the applicant as they go back to look at the redesign. I'm not sure what you said is what I'm in agreement with, but my, my thinking is that as you're looking at the wall from ground level, each elevation is less than five feet where you can. Not, like, if you've got a 13-foot wall, you got a big drop of 10 feet, and then you've got these little walls. So we're trying to eliminate those big, massive walls as much as possible. Now, the second thing, you mentioned that you thought that the seven-foot-four might, might wind up being closer to five feet after the accommodation of the, the substructure for putting the concrete or whatever down. The, the drawing on L1 adds up to about 15 inches, so I would think that you need to get a lot closer to five than seven-four. So, let's, so, so don't play a lot of, you know, number tricks to get us to think, oh yeah, well, six is actually going to be five, so let's see what you can do to get it to actually five feet.
Yeah, so just to be clear, I think, and I think, I think this was referenced in the motion, but I want to just clarify that I think that the conformance with the hillside design guidelines includes doing something to deal with the, the 100 continuous linear feet for the retaining wall, and looking a way to mitigate that, at least with the new walls that are being constructed, so that if the existing wall is behind and is buried in dirt, at least the new walls are, are meeting our hillside design guidelines with, with respect for that. And I would also emphasize that I think that there are places where more than one wall would help to do that, although it might result in a loss of usable space, but I think it would be important, again, to comply with the design guidelines in that regard. And then, finally, I think if this were to come before me again, I would want to see more information and detail on this buttressing and where it would occur, and to, I understand that there's a difference between drawings for permit, but I also understand that I'm looking at a very, what I consider a dangerous situation with these high walls that were constructed improperly, and I'd like to understand how that risk is being mitigated by seeing the, the buttressing on the drawings as well. So those are the additions that I have.
Whether we take those comments as understanding of the motion or amendments to the motion, certainly as the maker of the motion, I would agree to both interpretations, and if the secondary would also agree.
I would agree as well.
Okay, thank you. More discussion, questions of staff? We probably need a date if we're considering this?
Yeah, so staff would suggest April 10th, so that's about just shy of two months. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that amount of information together from the applicant and reviewed by staff in time for that. If not, then we'll request a continuance and continue to work with the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a date, I think the motion is complete, so I'll call the question in favor. I, okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. So that concludes item number three, and we will see this item again in April. So I would like to, we have just one more item, and that is the report, oh, I'm sorry, are there appeal rights?
There, there are no appeal rights, because the final decision was not made.
Okay, thank you. So item four, a report from the Director of Community Development. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, thank you. Just quickly, last week, the council took action on a few items that I think may be of interest to the planning commission. First one is, they introduced a, an ordinance for short-term rentals to regulate those, and so that will go back for a second reading. They also recommended implementing a parklet pilot. Staff originally had been looking at a couple on Main Street, they opened it up to, not necessarily limiting to Main Street, also including North Santa Cruz, as well as not limiting the number of potential parklets. So we'll see what comes forward on that. And then the other item is that they directed staff to move forward, and this will be coming out of the town manager's office. The Assistant Town Manager, Arn Andrews, will be working with community development staff, as well as Parks and Public Works and other departments, on moving forward with annexing 20, I think it's 23 or 21 of the county pockets in the flatlands, to have those come into the town's jurisdiction. There's been a law on the books that if a pocket is less than 150 acres, then the town can take it without an election. There hasn't been the will to do that in the past, and apparently, there's a little bit of interest in that, so we're going to be moving forward with that and seeing where that lands as it actually moves forward.
Okay, thank you. One other item that I was interested in, which I think is of great importance to the planning commission, and that is the way that appeals from the planning commission to the town council are handled. What's the status of changes to the existing process for handling appeals?
Sure, so that's, that's actually going to be, that actually is work that came out of the town council policy committee, so not the town council, so that's part of the efforts that they've been undertaking. We're guessing in the next four to six weeks, I think, bringing that revised code language for not only appeals in general, but also for minor residential applications. Tonight, it wasn't technically an appeal. One of their directions was to make that an appeal process, rather than just forwarding it up to the planning commission at the applicant's expense. So those are the two things that will be coming forward, and we're thinking four to six weeks, probably somewhere in that timeframe, before it gets to planning commission.
Okay, so that will come to the planning commission, and then to the council?
Correct. You'll be making a recommendation, because they are ordinance amendments.
Okay, so I think that's really important. Has there been any public input on that process?
I don't recall at the policy committee, you know, we have, quite frequently have folks there at policy committee. I think Ms. Cantana probably weighed in on it, at least at one of the policy committee meetings, but it was at multiple policy committee meetings.
Okay, this might be of great interest to developers as well, so we could probably discuss offline, but it seems like it would be, when we do consider this, it would be useful for us to understand whether outreach has been made to folks who would be, I think, very impacted by the change to the appeal process. So, okay. Any other questions? All right, so in addition to service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. We used to do this at the beginning, but we do this at the tail end now, so are there any reports tonight for CDAC, general plan advisory, or historic preservation? No meeting since our last, okay. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. I want to thank you all for participating, and on behalf of the commission, I'd like to wish you the finest Valentine's Day, and look forward to our next meeting on February and look forward to our next meeting on February 27th. The meeting is adjourned.